If you can leave that tilted. All right, we'll begin the regular meeting of Monday, City Commission meeting of Monday, May 6th. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we'll begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chippewa peoples who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. And with that, I will hand it over to City Clerk Marantet for our roll call, please.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner Anderson.
President.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Stanley.
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Here.
Commissioner Werner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Here.
And Mayor Shamro.
Here. All right, and we'll start with any announcements from the city manager?
None this evening.
All right, and from the city clerk, please.
Yes, just some meetings pronounced for this week, the week of May 6, 2024. The Coast Guard City Committee will meet on Wednesday, May 8, that's at 9:00 a.m., at the air station, and that meeting will immediately follow the presentation of the annual Guardian Award. And the Joint Recreational Authority is meeting also on Wednesday, May 8, at 7:00 p.m. in the commission chambers. Just some community updates, which include that the city's Human Rights Commission is seeking nominations for the Sarah Hardy Humanitarian Award. Nominations for that award are due by May 10 at noon, and the submission form can be found on the city's homepage. Also, the 200 block of Madison Street is closing tomorrow, Tuesday, May 7, through the end of the day this Friday, May 10, for water main repairs, and of course, access to homes will remain open. The Summer Beach Volleyball League registration opened today, and registration can be found on the Parks Recreation Division section of the city's webpage. And then there's a community blood drive that will be held at the governmental center on Tuesday, May 14, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. And other than the usual reminder for everyone to speak into the microphones, that's all that I've got.
All right, why don't we keep it rolling with the consent calendar, please?
Yes, the purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public can ask that any item on the agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests will be automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Item one, consideration of approving the minutes of the April 15 and April 29, 2024 meetings of the City Commission, and I just wanted to note that for the minutes of the April 15 meeting, we've corrected those at Old Business, item three, which was the item regarding going into closed session on the attorney-client communication related to the 1947 agreement, to reflect that Commissioner Stanley, not Commissioner Shaw, voted against that motion, so we've corrected that accordingly. Item two, consideration of adopting a resolution to add Carla Drive regarding, or excuse me, upgrading it from alley status to local street status for purposes of Act 51 funding. Adoption recommended. Item three, consideration of adopting a resolution recommending approval of the request from Loco Boys LLC for a new small distiller license and Sunday sales permit, and consideration of authorizing the city clerk to issue a registration for operation of the license and permit at 901 West Front Street. Adoption and approval recommended. Item four, consideration of adopting a resolution recognizing El Grupo Norte youth cycling as a nonprofit organization within the city of Traverse City so it may apply for a state-of-Michigan raffle license. Adoption recommended. Item five, consideration of authorizing a five-year agreement which provides for the city to be reimbursed for maintenance of state trunk lines. Approval recommended. Item six, consideration of authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and fiscal year 2025, 2026, for painting and striping of various parking areas, crosswalks, and legends. Approval recommended. Item seven, consideration of authorizing a confirming purchase order for diesel fuel for city operational use. Approval recommended. Item eight, consideration of accepting a public utility easement for public water main and public sanitary sewer purposes. Acceptance recommended. And finally, item nine, consideration of adopting a resolution extending the timeframe within which substantial construction must commence through May 6, 2025, or Parkway, Parkview, rather, apartments at 1223 East 8th Street in connection with a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot arrangement held by the Traverse City Housing Commission with the extension necessary to accommodate a delay in construction. Adoption recommended.
All right, is there any commissioner who'd like any item pulled from the agenda? Jackie?
Number three, please.
Okay. Any others? Mitch?
Number two.
Okay. Any others? Tim?
Five, six, and eight.
Okay. Okay, any others? Any member of the public like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Mindful that three, two, five, six, and eight have already been pulled. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept the consent calendar as amended.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so we'll go to item number three, please. Jackie, you had this pulled?
Yes. I, in the few months that I've been on the commission, we've been able to approve a number of liquor licenses for small businesses in the city, and I am fully supportive that Loco Boys be able to take advantage of that opportunity also. However, in doing a little bit of prep work for tonight, I dove into the healthier drinking culture report from October 2021, and saw that the very first action step, I think, was to create objective and clear criteria for the desired number, type, and location of liquor licenses. And I would request from city staff that we could, in sometime in the near future, discuss that report again and how we could begin implementing the action steps that were identified.
That's noted. Just to be clear, though, that Loco Boys already does have a liquor license in the state of Michigan.
Yes, this is for the distiller.
Yes, in the state of Michigan. If you want to change it slightly in any way, or add distillery, or even being open on Sunday, that does have to come back for any kind of approval. So, to clarify, that they do have a liquor license and have not had any violations under our permit, our, sorry.
Thank you.
We do our own permitting.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mitch?
Yes, I would like to echo Commissioner Anderson's sentiment of bringing back a discussion about the healthier drinking culture study at a future probably study session, and then if we decide to take action, it would be at an agenda for a regular meeting. But on the topic of the number and distribution of liquor licenses in the city, while this is changing a specific aspect of a type of liquor license, it isn't changing the location or the overall number that we have, so.
Very good point. With that said, and noted that we would like to bring those questions back to us for a study session, would anybody like to make a motion regarding this item in particular?
I'll make the motion that the resolution recommending approval of the request from Loco Boys LLC to issue to it a new small distiller license and Sunday sales permit PM be adopted, and that the city clerk be authorized to issue a liquor license registration to Loco Boys LLC doing business as Loco Boys Brewing Company for it to operate such licenses and permits at 901 West Front Street in Traverse City, Michigan, 49684.
Thank you. Commissioner Stanley? Do we have a second?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, any further comment on this item from the commission? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion from Commissioner Stanley, second by Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that's, we'll move on now to item number two, and I'm sorry, Mitch, did you pull this?
Yes.
Okay.
While I recognize that this is a house, I mean, this is a one-block street that already has properties on it, albeit they are listed as fronting on Tart Trail Lane, I have no objection to it being upgraded from an alley to street status, and Carla Lane seems, one, consistent with her overall policies about street naming. It doesn't cause confusion with any other streets, but just for posterity's sake, I am curious about how the name was determined, and is there any more information available on that?
I guess Frank, I don't know who would have that answer.
Frank, Attorney Director of Public Services. So the question is, how it got, was it originally named Carla Lane?
Yes. I'm guessing it was named after somebody named Carla, but who is that somebody?
It was long before my time here, but what, where we're at now is that typically that drive and street are the nomenclature that we use for Act 51 streets. So that's why we're asking for the name change to drive, called a drive, because lane is typically reserved for private drives.
Well, you don't know who Carla was, or...
Sorry?
You don't know who Carla was, or...
No, I don't know.
Other aspects of that. Thank you.
That's, yeah, so items like that, I have a feeling probably aren't always at our staff's fingertips, so maybe in the future, if we can get an email so they have a chance to do some digging, I'm sure that would be a good answer to have. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I move that the resolution to upgrade Carla Drive from an alley to a local street for purposes of Act 51 funding and be added to the Act 51 map be adopted.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioners Treadwell and Hardy. Any public comment?
Sorry, oh, sorry. Oh, my God. I just was, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, I was just speaking to her mother. I committed a grave sin. I apologize, Commissioner Shaw. So with that said, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any last comments from the commission, other than I'm sorry? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to item number five. Commissioner Werner, please?
Yeah, so five years ago, when this was before us, I thought we had a very good discussion about MDOT being willing, should the city request it, to actually remove snow and not just plow snow in places where the state trunk line does not have enough space between the roadway and the sidewalk, and so we end up having to figure out what to do with the street snow that gets placed on the sidewalk, and if the right of way doesn't have space, you know, technically, there's no place for us to put it. We do tend to still put it onto private property where space allows. But again, five years ago, we had a discussion about MDOT seemingly being willing to pay for removal, not just plowing of snow, and so I was wanting to check in on that to see if that's still the case, because certainly along Grandview Parkway and East Front Street, there are places where, you know, there may be a couple of feet, but sometimes only a few inches between the roadway and the sidewalk.
Frank, could you, do you have any commentary on that?
I have Mark Jones here, Street Superintendent, too, to help with answering the question. I don't remember the conversation about the MDOT removal. We did contact MDOT, MDOT paying for the removal of snow, but we did contact MDOT and ask that question, and they said they're not willing to pay for the removal of snow there, but there was a reason, I'll let Mark explain, the basis for when they would remove, pay for removal of the snow.
I talked to the maintenance coordinator from MDOT today, and the part that was in the agreement for removal is when a trunk line has a parking area beside the highway, which in Traverse City, we don't have any parking. And I don't recall either talking about removing snow. He wasn't receptive to that when I talked to him. Occasionally, when we get bad winters, like along the Hotel Indigo, they would pay if we had to get some snow out of there, because there's hardly anything between the curb and the sidewalk, and we've done that before. Other than that, sometimes we have to bench the edge of the highway or something to get the snow banks back, or we actually do have to remove it sometime, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there further questions about this item, or would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the mayor and the city clerk execute a five-year agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation, which provides that the city will provide certain maintenance services on state trunk line roads within the city's corporate limits, with full reimbursement to the city for labor, materials, and equipment associated with providing the service for the period of October 1, 2024 until September 30, 2029, with such agreement subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager, and it's for by the city.
There's a little typo. Four.
Okay. Good catch, good catch. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Anderson. Yes, Commissioner Werner?
Yeah, just, I fully support staff's efforts and continuing efforts to remove, or sorry, plow the snow and remove it on occasion, but I will be voting no, more in protest of MDOT's policy, because with Grandview Parkway under reconstruction, it's wider in spots, so even more difficult for pedestrians. And then we'll be talking later this evening about the multi-use trail, which at points is right up against the highway as well, and does get used in the wintertime. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Werner. Any other comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Treadwell.
Yes. Speaking with particular regard to those sections of Grandview Parkway, notably in front of Hotel Indigo, and East Front Street, notably in front of Rite Aid, that is why, on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, this body passed the major street setback ordinance in 2020 that requires a much larger setback along those key MDOT corridors, so that, yes, it won't change those particular buildings, but future development, including the hotel going in next to Hotel Indigo, will be farther back from the trunk line itself, therefore allowing more room for snow, and a clear sidewalk.
Okay. Any further comment from the commission? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro.
Yes, motion passes. Item number six, also back to you, Commissioner Werner.
Not, we've got a long agenda, so to be brief about this, I had concerns that we're not, as a city, trying to do better every year with the paint we put down, and at the same time acknowledging that street paint is a source of micro and nanoplastics in our soil, air, and bay. And so both for fiscal reasons to use less, as well as environmental reasons to use less. And, you know, as far as quality control, by way of example, on 7th Street, and I'm only aware of it because it's in front of my house, I don't go around town checking on things, but the sharrows that were put down for bicycling westbound were put down improperly last year, both east of Division and west of Division. West of Division, they were put in the parking lane to indicate that bicycles are to bike into the back of parked cars, whereas they're intended to be in the travel lane to show shareo is a sharing arrow indicating that motor vehicles and bicycles share the space. So that's just, it's not why I'm opposed to this, but that's just an example. And then as far as an example of how we can do better, one year to the next, would be a lot of these long lines that are put down are for bicycle lanes, and yet for our bicycle lanes, we still have yet to meet the bare five-foot width minimum for bicycle lanes, and that's something we could acknowledge, and even if we can't do it in one year, at least work toward.
Thank you, Commissioner Werner. Any other comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Shaw.
Wasn't there a conversation about bringing this whole process into house?
Yes, and I was just going to comment on that, so thank you for asking. I did ask about that last year, partially because of conversations about where best to do it, that having a larger conversation, but also, I know in the past, and it's been noted, that there's only so many companies that do this in the whole state or even region, and I know a couple of years ago, the complaint was, I don't think we had final lines down until about a week before Cherry Festival, so it got into the question even of, if we're waiting this long, why are we doing it? So, the startup cost, as was found, and I can have Liz speak a little bit more to this, because she did talk about it, was quite expensive, but we still might, we were just talking about bringing this back for a study session to have that information at least presented to this commission to decide, but if we did that, it would still take a year to two years at least to get us up and running doing it, so we would have to contract for at least another year or two, even if we have a study session, decide we want to take it in-house and want to do that a little bit more ourselves. So, that is still being discussed, and it is something we could definitely look at. Again, startup costs are one thing, long-term, maybe that makes more sense to us to do it, knowing that there'd be a better return on investment at the end of it, a few years. So, the answer to that is, no, not right now, but perhaps.
Well, I would be in support of that.
Great, well, yeah, we'll bring that for discussion to the board. And any other comments on this right now? Okay, any comments from the public on this?
Please state your name and address, and indicate if you're a city resident, non-city resident, or a city business owner. We've got a three-minute time allotment. When your time is elapsed, a timer will beep, and we ask that all language be respectful to everyone.
Justin Reed, 63, Cottage Drive, Apartment 1B, a Traverse City resident. Also, with the long lines, also thinking about something mall signage, you know, not as far as, you know, sign of pollution, but figuring in some of the areas around Traverse City, where maybe the answer isn't long lines, maybe the answer is something mall signage, just a thought, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan, I live at 686 Bay Hill Drive Apartment 9. Ms. Anderson, you said as far as the liquor licenses. We have had...
This is just about the item about painting, the liquor license item has already been voted on.
Right, I didn't realize as far as commenting, or, you know, whatever. I was trying to wait until the comment time, but as far as bikes and skateboards and so forth, I would like to ask the City Commission to adopt a rule or law that there is to be no skateboards on Front Street, because we've had some near misses with skateboarders flying through the lights on Cass and Union right out in front of cars, or they're right along the vehicles along Front Street, and somebody opens up their door, and, so during Cherry Festival and the busy times Friday night live, if you guys could put a rule in place where these things are not allowed to be on Front Street for everybody's safety, that would be great. But also, I will say that I do not like the liquor licenses, since we've had 15 car accidents over the last couple of weeks, and caught a few of them have been deadly due to alcohol, or alcohol-related, and speed. So if the city can look at cutting back the liquor licenses because of that, and the more it's going to get worse if liquor licenses are adopted or allowed, I would greatly appreciate that, and for everybody's safety, and the safe area as far as for those that drink or to be abbreviated, that the news has been saying out, I would ask the city to stop that effective immediately, because we've got enough of these people going on, and we've got more crime going on more than ever before, and more accidents and so forth due to all of this happening. So I would ask the City Commission to not adopt any of this, such so other, due to everybody's safety, health, and well-being and security, effective immediately. So, that's where I stand on that, but I'm very much in contest as far as with alcohol here, I think it should be outlawed.
Thank you. Any other comments on the striping? And Benjamin, can you help me? I apologize to everybody, I am, my iPad was left on and it died, so I've been reading off of my phone here. But did I, do we have a motion for six?
Not yet.
That's what I thought. So, I jumped the gun a little on the public comment, we'll count that, if I can have a motion from anyone on item number six.
I move that the city manager be authorized to issue a purchase order to Advanced Pavement Markings LLC in the amount not to exceed $297,908.94, $148,954.45 for fiscal year 24-25, and $148,954.45 for fiscal year 25-26, for painting and striping of crosswalks, parking areas, and legends throughout the city, with funds available in the respective streets, parks, garage, and parking administration funds.
Thank you, Jackie.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comment from the commission up here?
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to check the number. It sounds like a different number than what we originally put forth. I want to make sure you don't have a resolution on something that's incorrect.
So it's, the dollar amount is $297,000, $297,908.94 for the two years, right?
For two years.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't hear that part.
She was reading the per-year amount as well.
Yes. Being very effective, we appreciate that. Okay, any other comment from the commission on this? Public comment, we did it a little out of order, I apologize, but we'll have noted that on this item, so I'll bring it back to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro.
Yes, motion passes. And moving to item number eight, Commissioner Werner.
Yeah, and this one, I'm fully in support of, and for the public, this is a public utility easement, so sanitary sewer, water line under public, under private property, but the public gets an easement. And there was a follow-up question that I had asked of city manager and staff, which was about maintaining the surface above that, because we, as a city, were involved in some litigation a few years ago, and there was, I think, arbitration. And personally, it was somewhat frustrating, because it was a private tree growing into the public sewer, causing the problem, but we, as the public, were held responsible for paying for what happened, even though it was a, we didn't own the tree. And so my concern is, yes, we have rights, it sounds like, from the city attorney for, and this is where I wanted clarification, is it just the 10-foot width on the center line, the easement up on the surface, because certainly a tree doesn't, like five feet away horizontally, doesn't seem like much for a mature tree. So to make sure we have appropriate widths and rights to maintain that, as well as some plan to check up on that 10, 20, 50 years from now, because we're not going to be here. So if somebody set a reminder on a computer, I know we check on underground, but to check on the above ground, so we don't get in a...
Yeah, Mayor Shamro, if I may, so I did speak with our city attorney, Lauren Triple Lockt, and in addition to what she provided to the commission, there are visual checks, there's regular maintenance program and TVing, and yeah, I know that's for the underground, but that also goes with the visual above ground. We also do put it in our GIS system, so there's a, it's in our database. I think with regular visual checks, to see if, oops, someone planted a tree over that, which we wouldn't want, of course, that would, that would be one of the ways, but there are, there are three or four ways that we have some safety measures to make sure that the asset underneath is protected.
Thank you. So with that, I'll make the motion that the public utility easement from Ogreti Development Company is included with the official meeting.
Has included.
It seems weird. Okay, official meeting materials for the May 6, 2024 City Commission meeting be accepted.
That's correct, yes. It requires your official acceptance.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further comment from the commission on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move on to old business now. We went into closed session a couple of weeks ago now, and had no action, said there would be no action at the end, but has been decided, or at least been put forward, that we release what the attorney-client privilege from that, so if that is the will of this commission, we'll take a motion right now to do so.
I move, I move that attorney-client privilege on the April 8, 2024 communication from the city attorney, and the excerpt from the January 5, 2024 communication from the city attorney, related to the Grandview Parkway Phase 2 project and the 1947 agreement, be released.
Support. Thank you. Motion's from... Thank you. Motion's from Shaw and Stanley. Any comments on this? Probably not. This is procedural, so actually we don't, do we do public comment on procedural?
Yeah, it's an individual agenda item, so yes.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to old business number two. This is the TART Trails Bayfront Improvement. Bringing this back, there was a very hearty discussion on this a couple of weeks ago, so we have noted that into the record. So, did you want to say anything? I think that was pretty comprehensively covered. So does anybody have any new items they want to share, or anything they want to discuss about this?
I would just, you know, apologize that I missed the meeting when this was on the agenda the first time. I'm in full support of it and happy to see it back. The motion is rather long.
Oh, I will be nice and even read it off my phone for you guys if you'd like me to. But, well, I will...
I'll move that the mayor and city clerk execute a funding agreement with TART Trails articulating that it will provide $121,449 in funding for the TART Bayfront Improvement and Extension Project, with such agreement subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney. And further that, the mayor and city clerk execute a funding agreement with the Traverse City Downtown Development Authority articulating that it will provide $200,000 in funding for the TART Bayfront Improvement and Extension Project, with such agreement subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney. And further that, the mayor and city clerk execute a unit prices contract not to exceed $1,073,469.05 for the construction of the TART Bayfront Extension, and also that the city manager be authorized to manage a $68,503.95 contingency with such contract subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds to come by the Capital Projects Fund 245. And further that...
Next page.
The mayor and city clerk execute the necessary documents with the state of Michigan to accept a $500,000 revitalization and placemaking, RAP, grant for the TART Bayfront Extension with such documents subject to the approval as to their substance by the city manager and their form by the city attorney. And finally, that the mayor and city clerk execute an amendment to the agreement with Progressive AE in the amount not to exceed $100,925 authorized by the city commission on April 18, 2022 for construction management services related to TART Bayfront Extension with funds to come from the Capital Projects Fund 245, with such amendment subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney.
Support.
Thank you, Mitch. And thank you, Mark. That really wasn't meant to be a punishment for missing the meeting, but we appreciate you doing it. Okay, motion by Wilson, second by Treadwell, and Tim.
Well, thank you for not being here, because that gave us a chance to discuss it, and then it actually gave me a chance to sit down with representatives of TART and have an excellent conversation about some of the topics that I brought up. And not going into all three of them, I'll just focus on the one which seemed to get the most interest from the public, and that is the safety, where the shared-use path is right against the highway. And Progressive AE has tried to address it in the memo here. But I think what they're missing is that what they're citing is for a one-way raised and separated bike lane along motor vehicle travel direction, whereas what's actually being proposed and constructed is a shared-use path or a side path so that there's bicycles traveling in an opposing direction to the motor vehicles. And that closing distance can be 30 miles per hour greater than if they're traveling in the same direction. And so, yes, they've cited various standards and this and that's in there, but they're not applicable. What's applicable, and you can find it pretty quickly when you look online, like the state of Wisconsin has Bicycle Facility Design Handbook from 2018, so it's not as old as the 2012 that they're saying doesn't apply anymore. The state of Washington has 2023 standards. State of Colorado has 2023 standards. State of Oregon, where our city engineer is recently from, has March of 2024 standards. And all four of these states call for 42-inch height for the safety of the bicyclists. And that 42-inch height is the same height as the rail that MDOT has installed on the riprap, so the bay side of the multi-use trail just before the bridge. So MDOT is aware of this 42-inch requirement. They are. It's just in their interpretation of where is it needed. They, along with Progressive AE, have decided, well, it's not needed here, but it is needed here. It's required here, and it should be here. And in defense of TART, and I didn't share, like what was most meaningful for me in that conversation was kind of a realization of how we as a community are, in my opinion, dysfunctional when it comes to biking and walking. And that is, you know, TART for years has advocated for trails on the ground, and they do that extremely well. And from time to time, they've advocated for people moving throughout the community. But over the years, they've run into roadblock after roadblock, trying to suggest to the city engineering ideas of how to connect to the trails. And so, these are my words, but essentially, they've decided, fine, we'll do what we do well, and the city can connect to the trails if they choose to. And the city hasn't chosen to, and so it's on us. But then we, as a body, we're not expected to be experts on connecting to trails. So we either defer to city engineering, who's not really interested, or we defer to TART, who's keeping their mouth shut, because they want to move forward with projects and get things done, and they want to be able to cooperate and work with the city and MDOT. And so that's why I say dysfunctional. It's nobody's fault. It's just here we are. And so there's nobody that's advocating for getting to this new trail. And then when we're on this new trail, how is it safe for all users? Because we bring in Progressive AE from the outside. Again, we don't know if they're experts or not experts, and it seems like maybe they're somewhere in between. They've done some good things here, but they also have some shortcomings, I would say, in their design. And so, we're a small town, so who's keeping an eye on them? Who's watching the watchers, sort of thing? And that's a Dr. Seuss reference. And so I think we can do better. What's the process? How do we get MDOT to allow a 42-inch... Something there for safety? I don't know. But even here in the Progressive AE, you know, recommendation, they... So the current guardrail, for everybody's knowledge, is 23 inches high, so just for reference. That's 23 inches high. And in all these states that I referenced, they all refer to that as a tip-over or a tipping hazard. So it's hazardous to people on bicycles to fall into a highway with oncoming traffic. And a rub rail, which is referenced here by Progressive AE, that's below 23 inches. Rub rails are referenced by these states, but rub rails are for handlebars, so they're not caught in some sort of fencing. So at, and there's a range for handlebar height, but so that for the safety, again, of folks traveling on bicycles. So yes, I had all sorts, a whole long list last meeting of things that I had concerns about. And I was advocating for maybe a B-plus we could get to, and that I thought the current design was a C-minus. There have been some small improvements here or there, but I think this safety improvement has to be included to get us anywhere close to a B-plus, and I think the citizens deserve it.
I believe Liz was trying to...
Yeah. I mean, Commissioner Warner, I know you've asked a lot of questions about the safety, and I just, I think it's important to point out that the 42-inch requirement is not yet adopted in the state of Michigan. Yes, it is adopted in four other states, but it's not here. It doesn't mean that it shouldn't be or couldn't be, and that's a different conversation for a different time. But I just don't think it's fair to say that an engineering firm is ignoring a rule that doesn't exist yet in the state of Michigan.
That means that we hire engineering firm to do the basic minimum?
I'm just saying it needs to be clear to the public that you're citing a standard that doesn't yet exist here in the state of Michigan. And you also stated that our city engineering team doesn't care or isn't interested, I think your words were, isn't interested. And I don't think that that's a fair characterization. Our engineering team works really hard every day on every project that comes before them. We are there, the entire team is there to answer questions of city commissioners. And so to intimate that they're not interested, that's something, first of all, if that's your opinion...
I said in the past.
Well, but we still have current people that have been in this department for many years. We have new staff. And I just think that's a disservice to our staff, so I'm just going to leave it at that.
Does any other commissioner have any items on this?
So just to be clear, the 300 feet that MDOT has tentatively agreed to extend along the bridge and west of the bridge...
Makes it worse. It's more of a tripping and tipping over hazard.
It's a 22, it's only 22 inches.
23.
23 inches.
So I believe the example that Commissioner Warner kept using, so I'm stating very clearly this was Commissioner Warner's, not my choice of language, was when Grandma is out on her bike, this is what's going to happen. And this is where his concern is, and that is in saddle, this could lead to this issue, and this was where the concern was for the health and safety. And as I pointed out, that I, who maybe by some, there's some students in this room might think I'm Grandma-aged, but I am also not a good rider, that I think that there's some allowance in here for, before we sweep this all as unsafe and hazardous or anything, of discretion of riders as you go through. You know, is everything getting knocked out of the park as an A++? I don't know.
I said B+. I wasn't going for A++.
I didn't say, I wasn't referencing you in this case, Commissioner Warner.
I didn't call you Grandma. All users, all locations.
Excuse me, Commissioner Warner, but I'm speaking right now. I have the floor right now. And what I said was, you use your example of Grandma's trying to ride the trail. That is what I said. I said, I think I'm probably comparable to a grandmother in your example of my rider skills. Please don't misquote me. Now, what I was saying is that we have to allow for some discretion. I don't think that any project, we talked about this last time, the 8th Street example of the charrette, where everybody sat in a room, and I sat next to a gentleman who said, I don't know why I'm wasting my time on this. This isn't going to be great. And I said, yeah, if you want it to look exactly like what you wanted it to look like, then this isn't going to be great. I guarantee you, it's not going to be the 8th Street that you particularly are envisioning. That's what I mean by, is it any project can be an A++ when it comes before us? Probably not in somebody's eyes, because it's going, there's going to be something that they would have done differently. I think this is a good project, though, and I think this is a good addition to our city. I think our, there's a lot of staff and a lot of people have worked really hard on this, and I think that we are going to benefit greatly as a community for this. And I think it's going to be a great asset for riders of any ability to use. And that's my comments before we go to a vote. Any others? Mark, really quick.
Just that whether we move forward the project or not, the particular hazard does still exist. And to the city manager's point, if the state of Michigan were to make this change and adopt that as a statewide standard, would it not be on MDOT to make those improvements?
That's a good question. I think the short answer would be yes, if something was adopted. But I think everyone isn't, I mean, I think we all want people to use a trail that's safely built. And we do have some pinch points that currently are untenable. I've been out there, and this is an improvement.
Heather, do you have?
I really, really want to support this. But I feel that a barrier that's right up against the highway, and this is considered, you know, anything, any traffic that goes over 30 miles an hour is considered high traffic, dangerous, risk, risky. A barrier that's not even two feet tall, you know, what happens if I fall over that? That I'm trying to get out of the way of pedestrians, because it's a shared path, and I fall into the highway. Who's liable for that?
Benjamin, did you have a guess, or you're just removing?
If I can't see it, it's down, I mean, two feet is really low. It's hard to see.
It's there right now. You can go see it right now. I know what he's talking about. It's the rail for the traffic. And so if we don't move forward, it's still there.
It's still there.
This is our opportunity to say this is something we want, that we want our citizens to be safer when they're using that shared-use path. People have been asking for this for years, I mean, more than two years. This was a hot topic, one of the main topics people would ask me about with the original MDOT design. And now it's us. This is our trail being built, so we...
I wasn't here when the bridge was redone. I wasn't, I mean, I lived in the city. I wasn't on commission, but why wasn't that done then?
Because MDOT isn't interested.
So if we don't do it, this just exists. And if we do do it, is there opportunity for us to actually get that done? And if so, how much? And is it a deal breaker? Can...
Don't these sections come in pieces? Isn't, aren't there 42-inch sections that could replace these 23-inch sections? How much more would it cost? Don't they come as standard, you know, pieces that are just inserted into the pavement?
We see some heads turning to ask.
I mean, it's a short stretch. It's just a stretch across the bridge, right?
No, 300 feet.
Oh, from the bridge.
Okay, do we have, I'm sorry, I see some people, does someone want to approach the podium with some answers here?
The pass will be right against the highway.
Hi, I'm Lucas Poreth with the Traverse City Office, with MDOT Project Manager for the designs.
Okay.
So...
So we're asking about, do these guardrails come prefabricated in different sizes? Could we substitute 42-inch guardrails for the 23-inch?
So like if you extended the rigid, like there's that height on the bridge. So if we extended that, you still have to have guardrail on the other side of it, because it's rigid, it's considered a fixed object for traffic, so it has to be protected by guardrail. So we would just be pushing that down further down the road. We still would have to have guardrail at some point.
So we say, it would be both. So guardrail to keep the cars where the cars are, the fence, or I don't know what it's called, it was probably a fancy name, the 42-inch barrier to keep the bicycles where the bicycles are, but just against each other.
We'd be happy, we looked at that with the Parkway project, and it just wasn't feasible in the space. We'd be happy to look at it again with city staff, with their engineers, with Progressive, with anybody. And we can look at the constraints that we have and where things would have to go and what it would look like.
So, question, can I, just a question along with this, I apologize. I appreciate that you're saying you're willing to look at that again with us. The reality, too, is we are having this conversation, is this is underway right now. We have to get contracting out, we have to do other things. They have to order and have these discussions. This very much is coming down to, right now, whether we vote for this or not, that is going to be the same right now, because it won't happen. This project won't happen, and everything will remain as it is. So, I appreciate you coming up and saying, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've had, we've looked at how to provide that height and that in the space, and we, there was, we were not able to find a way to make that fit with our designers, with the city's designers. But so, and we're happy to look at it again and to kind of work through that with anybody that wants to work through it with us. And we're open to, you know, if there's a way to make any changes, but I just, I don't think there's a way.
Thank you.
And we do meet standard for a side path with the guardrail height.
We could get this done now and then work together to get the 42-inch installed at a later date.
If it's possible.
Hopefully the state would make the necessary adjustments, and then we could put it on MDOT to do it.
Yes. We won't hold accountable for that question. No, I appreciate... No, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate you coming up to clarify that. Thank you, and to reiterate that you're open to the discussion. Appreciate that. Again, I would bring this back to, we are in a limited time. We say no to this, there's no funding, nothing happens, and there's still 23 foot there, or inch, sorry. And no discussion, because the project's done. That's, that's where we're at right now.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I, I understand, I think, some of the time urgency and the ability to coordinate with Elmer's current efforts along the Parkway. I would like to also thank TART for their outreach and the time that they've spent addressing some of the issues that were, were brought up previously. I have some remaining concerns, one of which is that this, I believe, is the first half-mile of a two-and-a-half-mile trail, which means that the, we are looking at $600,000 today of combined city and DDA funding, but that to complete Phase One of this project, we're looking at more like $3 million of combined city and DDA funding, and that's not adding in any inflationary costs. So it is, I'm trying to keep that larger context in mind. I share Commissioner Warner's concerns about safety, and into the safety topic, I would add the subject of lighting, which from the descriptions that I read in tonight's packet, seems to be kind of kicked down the road a bit to be dealt with later. And then I also am concerned that the value of our green space is being underestimated. You know, every, every tenth of a mile of a wider TART trail, paved trail, is going to be replacing grass and trees. And while it's hard to quantify the usage of that, I think, I think they, they bear incredible value to the community and that we went through a lot to achieve that level of green space, green space along our, along our waterfront. So I will not be supporting the proposal, and I think that being able to go into the strategic planning process during the upcoming year, knowing that where we have that funding available to balance the need for an improved TART trail with other potential improvements citywide, I'd like to be able to, to keep that option open.
So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson, you're saying that because of the current cost share between the city and DDA, and there being another two miles to be built, you're presuming that future commissions and future DDA boards would give, in the exact same amount for the future length?
And I'm being conservative in that, to simply...
So those decisions haven't been made yet?
That is correct, but to, to build three small segments of the trail that total a half a mile, understanding that the project is actually two-and-a-half miles, seems shortsighted to me.
I can see that, I certainly can. I think I would point out that we've had that as a great asset in this community with the loop before it was completed for about two decades, and was still greatly used and eventually finished. And there's a lot of discussions left to be had, so, well, I appreciate what you're saying now about your other, I hear what you're saying now about your other reasonings. That's something that we're always faced with. We're always doing something that potentially is going to ripple effect into something else, but we have to do what we can when we can. So that's where we look at, that's why things get looked at at pieces a lot of the time.
I would hate to find us in a position where we have found money for the, the first half-mile and, and not be able to complete the project. And I, I am anticipating favorably and positively our strategic planning process that's, that's going to finally, I hope, align our spending priorities with our, our strategic priorities as a city. And, and I just feel that making this size of a commitment, 'cause I, I see it as a multi-phase commitment. I don't see it as just tonight. I think that it's premature.
I mean, I somewhat disagree. I see what you're saying, but even as little as, you know, 15 years ago, there was streets in my neighborhood that still weren't yet paved. That doesn't mean we don't pave other streets within the city. You know, this is one part of a project that hopefully, I hope to see be completed, and we don't know what opportunities are gonna come in the future that will mirror this or what agreements will be made later. So I think it's a great opportunity, it's a great project, I fully support it. I wish with, like most votes, that we could get all of us to yes, and that we could work off a consensus, but I respect your decision.
Thank you, and I respect yours. Maybe, maybe a better simile might be, we're paving one block of a street and leaving the next block unpaved, and going to a pavement and then unpaving it, you know?
Our sidewalks were like that.
Yep.
And, and that exact scenario was like that for a period of time.
And that is how things do get done sometimes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Warner.
Yeah, well, people are pondering how to move this forward. Just a comment that I, I meant no disrespect to grandmothers anywhere. I actually was using grandmothers as a positive example because of my great respect for them. But NACTO uses designing for all ages and abilities, so I'll try to use that and not reference grandmothers anymore.
As someone with poorer abilities, I appreciate that.
I was just gonna say that it's, it's a shame that this really outstanding stretch of view space along the bay, which is the highlight of Traverse City, it's our gem, can't be safe for all residents and visitors. It really, it favors cars over bicyclists and pedestrians. But as Commissioner Wilson pointed out, it's, it's no worse, it will be no worse than it is already, and I will support it going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. With that, I'm gonna open this up for public, we did have a motion, yes, sorry, Mark read the very long motion, I don't mean to dismiss that. With that, we'll open it up for public comment. Please feel free to approach the podium. If there's quite a few people, feel free to start lining up.
My name is Rick Venner, and I live on 1660 Wayne Street, Slab Town. I'm also the vice president of the Cherry Capital Cycling Club, which right now has a membership of 550 members. Most, most of them are regional, so they bike and they live in this area. I'd have to say wow to this conversation, and I respect Tim's comments, and I think he's spot on on an awful lot of them. But having said that, the Cherry Capital Cycling Club fully supports a yes vote for moving forward with the Bayfront Trail project, so much so that our little club has committed $5,000 specifically for the Bayfront project. And by the way, it's contingent on this, on the vote tonight. Our club members, including myself, know what it means to bike and walk our town. We are, we know the pinch points and are aware of the antiquated and lack of safe biking and for a structure, and for a structure in our beautiful, and structure in our beautiful city. Bayfront Trail, in our, in our opinion, offers the only safe way to get across town. Why? Because it separates us from vehicles. Until we see real progress on protected bike lanes in town, we are heavily relying on the Bayfront Trail to commute bike recreationally and access shopping. I also feel compelled to mention that any delay in the Bayfront Trail is a further delay in connecting downtown TC with Old Mission Peninsula. I dream of seeing the proposed protected bike lane from Eastern Avenue to the new Bayfront Trail by the Blue Goat happen in my lifetime. That dream hinges on your decision tonight, and I thank you for your careful consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Reed, city resident. I wanna say that I use the TART trail, often to get to the Maritime Campus, because I work at the college, and it's a safer commute to cross at Hall Street with the Hawk signal and going to the Maritime Campus. A wider trail would go ahead and would make a little bit easier during the, when there's a huge amount of pedestrians, bicyclists on that trail. And unless the city goes ahead and does things on their, on their city streets, that's something they can do. However, the portion that the Bayfront is on is part of MDOT, and the city has some control over that, but they don't have all the control. And the protective streets, the protective bicycle lanes on the streets is a city issue, and maybe the city needs to respond better with their city engineer, which I think probably does a good job, is stressful, but nonetheless, that there, there needs to be a, another discussion on safe streets as far as a mobility handbook goes for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stand on my tippy toes. I'm Meg Ackerman, and I'm a resident in Slab Town with my husband. I'm also a member of the TART Board of Directors, so I'm here in two capacities. And my husband and I both want to convey our support of this project and encourage you to, to support this project, project as well. Living near the intersection of Randolph and Maple Street, we spend a lot of time on the Bayfront Trail and observing people out on the trail, users, and some of it is a little bit scary. So I do think that there's, there's balance between the green spaces you talked about and also making sure that we have a facility that everybody can enjoy, all users, and that we can enjoy safely. We also have just recently moved two family members to town who are wheelchair users, and I have a very different perspective now on how people get around. And we would love to have them out on the Bayfront Trail. And right now, it doesn't feel extremely safe to be able to do that. To try and maneuver two wheelchairs out on that trail is a little bit frightening to me. And to, to be able to allow them to enjoy the waterfront is really important to me. So, and, and all users, just as we talked about a little bit, a little while ago. So I do feel that that's important. And then to Rick's point, also, to be able to get across town safely for those of us who are not, you know, the people who feel safest in the roadway. I'm one of those kind of people. I, I will ride in the roadway, I feel safer on an actual trail. So to know that I can get across town and be more active is very important to me. So while it's easy to talk about different routes that people can take to get to, to all these different destinations in the city, I do think it's important that we need to think about all of our users, children, wheelchair users, and people with different abilities. And I also think that it's important to know that I have a background in active transportation. I'm retired from safe routes to school. There is no project that is perfect. There just isn't. We look for what is the safest, and we look to make improvements. And sometimes those improvements are incremental. This is an incremental improvement, and I feel it's a very important one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm too short, too. So Caroline Kennedy, city resident, 1925 Seneca Street. Just really wanna encourage a yes vote from our city commission on this project. We've got a half a million dollar RAP grant right now. That goes away if you don't vote for this. We've got the cost savings of coordinating Elmer's time with MDOT time on these, on these projects. These are big financial wins for this community and for the different groups that are trying to piece these projects together. I've been riding around this town since 1980, and, you know, bit by bit, it gets better. I've been here on and off. My last two kids, not the first two, but the last two kids, were able to enjoy a lot more of the trail. And we do have pinch points, and we do have difficult areas, but to try and stop going forward with the segments we have available now, in the hopes that we'll have an ideal route to put together all at one time, we lose the current funding and financing that we have, and then we're just farther behind. Every year that goes by, it costs more, not to mention then we're gonna be digging up where we just paved. So I think now is the sweet time to do it. Is it perfect? Nope, but guess what? Haven't been riding around here since 1980, I'm now Grandma age. I would like it to get done while I can still get on a bike. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Cady. I'm a resident at 309 Cass for the past 11 years. I've been a supporter of TART trails for a lot longer than that. And frankly, I am stunned that this city commission is not voting to put this motion in work now. The money is there, the money is not only including government matching funds, some people might have a problem with that, because it's, it's tax money that, that could be saved. But I will tell you that there are hundreds of thousands of dollars donated by members of TART and of the community, just like me, because I want to be able to bike, I want to be able to walk throughout my community. And this particular incremental improvement will simply lead to future improvements. I look back in the last mere 10, 11, 12 years at the difficulty that people had getting their arms around Clinch Park's improvements. Now we have a road that is going to be a first-class passage after 50 years of no improvement. We're going to have, thank you to the city council and the county for the investment in the senior center, of which I hope to be able to walk to, and not walk around a tree, thank you very much. I do respect that thought process, but I think now is not the time to take that stand. I strongly urge that we stick with what the past city councils have worked towards in getting these funds together, the collaboration with TART and other governmental entities, and get this done so that we can look at a first-class passageway that is very close to being reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Williams. I'm a lifelong resident of Traverse City. I am one of the four original founders of TART. I was the first president of TART. I have been involved with TART as much as possible up to this day. I reside at 873 Peninsula Drive, which will be part of the new TART extension along the Shoreway to Eastern Avenue, which I've been trying to get built now since 1986. So I've had a little bit of patience here. TART has always been built in segments, in parts, in order to make it together. Our original charge was to build a trail from downtown Traverse City to the Grand Traverse Resort. That still hasn't happened. That doesn't mean that TART is a failure. We are a marvelous operation. I am firmly in support of everything that goes on. And I think the other part that, as Commissioner Shaw mentioned, when you see visitors come to Traverse City, one of the first things they do is they'll walk across the Parkway and behold what is almost the front of Disney World, okay? They're seeing something we take for granted. And so if you can't allow these people to walk around and circulate and be like the Atlantic City Boardwalk, which is basically what we're trying to build here, is something that works for citizens year-round as we commute through town. I cycle here every day, I continue to cycle past that every day. We want to make this a world-class front venue for Traverse City, for our residents, for visitors... just for everybody to go, wow. It's what we have and you watch the people every day. They pull out their phones and they start taking pictures. They're just amazed at what we have here and that's why they all want to come and visit. That's what helps us out here. I'm urging you to support this construction. And I'm also going to ask very quickly, as I have ridden by there hundreds of thousands of times, has anyone ever fallen into the parkway yet? I've never heard of an accident, people falling in there, even with the low guard rail. And then there's a whole section with no guard rail and dirt between the curb and the trail. Still, I don't see anybody wiping out. So I think this is a, it's an issue to be pushing down and just to be well aware of the fact that we have our children, which are running from the senior high down Peninsula Drive, which has no sidewalk, every morning, they're running the sidewalk. They go all the way to West End Beach and back for the tennis team, the football team, the track team. They do this every morning. We have our children running in the street with high-speed traffic and it's wrong. We need a pedestrian, non-motorized way so that we can get people out of their cars. If you're worried about traffic issues, I just tell everybody, if you're stuck in traffic, remember you are the traffic. If you're on a bicycle, if you're on foot, you are the solution. It is the greener solution more than the green grass. So we have to get around on our own people power actively, not doing it in a motor vehicle, which is considered insanity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Julie Clark, 604 West 12th Street. I'll be brief. Over the past two years, TART, the DDA and city have been working to improve non-motorized access along the Bayfront. With significant public input and a final design that was approved in October 2023, we are very appreciative of the commission's continued support of this effort. And we hope that it's tonight that we can see it completed. I want to acknowledge and commend MDOT staff for their continued investment and improvement in this project wherever possible. They continue to come to the table. They will be there and they're continuing to work as we head both east and west. This project is long-awaited and is a meaningful piece of the puzzle. It will provide immediate improvements compared to what is there today or won't be, depending on your vote. It's also a piece of the long-term improvement and opportunities that we have to provide safer, more comfortable and convenient ways to access and connect our residents and visitors to the Bayfront beaches and desired destinations along the way. This is not a trail to nowhere. These are important connections that provide immediate connections as well as long-term destinations. I do want to just clarify as the CEO of TART that we are all about more people, getting around, as John eloquently said, people-powered. And we will continue to look forward to working with the city to make connections to the trail network. This project is about the trail piece. And we have spent a lot of time with city staff on planning and engineering to make improved connections to our city streets. And we will continue to do that. And we are very grateful for your investment in that because that's what it takes, is the city's investment in putting these pieces together. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan, 686 Bay Hill Drive Apartment 9. With all of you guys saying about all this, you guys keep saying about guardrails. Why can we not have a, a block wall that is, what can we say, three blocks high, four blocks high, that go right along the roadway? So therefore that it keeps people out of traffic, but it also keeps the traffic away from people. Because as this construction zone is happening, if you put the block wall on one side, one block, block wall on the other, it separates everything. It would be a lot cheaper than you guys saying about a guard rail. And I'd say it'd be a lot cheaper that way than anything else. And it would fit into the concrete sidewalks and the asphalt and so forth. You could still have the view of the water. You could still have the, see the green grass on the open space. And it would keep everybody, and it would keep the snow from not being up on the side of the road. And so forth, since you guys talk about snow removal. It would be a win-win. You guys have the money. And as everybody else has urged you to do this, please vote yes on this. Do not put a no to it at all period because this is our town, this is our city, this is our state. And this would just be such a benefit all the way around. But if you guys vote no, then you throw everything away. And that's, that's not right of a city commission to do when we have the greater opportunity right now in front of us. And either you guys vote to say, yes, we're going to do this, or you throw it right down the tubes and then regret it 10 or 20 years down the road and going, oh yeah, we should have done this and it being too late.
Thank you.
Hi there, Jill Sil, 560 Island View Drive, Grand Traverse County. I'm here as a resident of the county and a representative of Norte Youth Cycling to advocate for the TART Bayfront Improvement Project. It's my understanding that this project has been before the public more than 15 times and was approved by the Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the City Commission at every step from concept to final design and funding. This plan also aligns with the city's strategic goal of addressing climate change and supporting non-motorized transportation. This project enables people of all ages and abilities a safer way to move through the community and a more enjoyable way to move through the community. This project will construct a new trail connection between Sunset Park and the Senior Center as well as between Division and Hall Street. It will replace crumbling asphalt between the east end of Clinch to Merchi Bridge, provide safer connections to Eastern Avenue and the hundreds of homes and multiple schools that it will connect, creates immediate ways for our residents to safely and comfortably access public areas along our bayshore that don't currently exist. This project will align construction times with work underway already with the parkway and provide the most cost-effective and least disruptive way to construct these essential connections. It's my understanding that this project is funded through the city and the DDA with nearly a one-to-one match. TART's $500,000 RAP grant and private contributions of over $121,000. I don't know if that includes Cherry Capital's $5,000 that they've pledged. And as a representative of Norte Youth Cycling, every year we have more than 3,000 riders of all ages and abilities in our programming. Our programming and impact does not happen unless there are safe ways and safe spaces for our children and our riders to move through the community. The physical and social and emotional benefits of physical activity and social connections are extensive. This is only possible when communities adopt infrastructure changes that allow environmentally friendly and healthy multimodal transportation opportunities. I encourage you to approve the TART Bayfront Improvement Plan this evening so that my children, your children, and generations to come can enjoy the benefits of this well-planned collaboration between TART, the city, and the DDA. And as Meg Ackerman said, it's incremental improvements. We can't do it all at once, but we need to start. We're here. The work has been put in. I urge you to move forward now, not 20 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Commissioner Treadwell.
Yes. In response to Commissioner Warner's concerns and a statement by the public comment, I'd like to admit that I have actually fallen into the roadway from the sidewalk along M-37, but not in this project area. It was a section of East Front Street, immediately east of Garfield, west of Garfield Avenue, where the sidewalk is very close to the roadway and has uneven pavement. Plus, there are multiple driveway cuts that directly intersect the sidewalk and it caused a bit of undulation. The overall design of the TART improvements here have a much smoother surface, have as much as is possible separation from the roadway so that even if there isn't a firm barrier, it is much less likely that somebody will lose their traction on their bike and lose balance and fall. I don't think that that is a significant concern with the existing design, which is a much greater improvement over what we have. And I think that it sets a good standard going forward for what we should try to emulate as a city that promotes biking for both residents and visitors to the area.
Thanks, Mitch. Mark?
And I just want to keep in mind that after the parkway is finished, that that intersection at Grandview Parkway and Front Street will be different. And so traffic shall be calmer coming westbound.
Tim?
Except when it's a green light. So I had a question for, I think it's city staff because at the meeting I had with TART, they had some encouraging news that they had talked to city staff and that at the 90-degree corners where two bicycle ways intersect, that fillets were being added. So like a welding fillet, just a slight rounded. But in Progressive AE's memo, I'm not seeing any reference to that. So wondering if indeed they are being included or not.
They are being included.
Thank you. And then final comment. The last meeting where we slightly failed on votes to approve this, it was only just before that meeting where this body actually had a chance to look at the final design. So yes, quantity-wise, there have been lots of meetings. But as far as looking at the details, that was the first opportunity to look at the details. So again, that's why, to my earliest opening comments, that we need advocates out there that are paying attention to details because we're a small town and we don't, we don't have somebody that's doing that for us. We need, we need to do that.
All right. I'll call for the vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we're going to move on now to the demolition and abatement at West State Street. I'll hand that over to you, Liz.
So this was before the commission, a few months ago. This was brought to us by the DDA. This is an Eagle Grant for demolition and abatement on an old, is it a dry cleaner? And another property, 115 Pine Street, 126 West State Street, 122 West State Street, and 122 West State Street, all the properties together. And again, this is an Eagle Grant. It does have a timeline attached to it. It's two years. I'm not sure where we stand in that two-year timeline. The city has a number of properties that are contaminated such as this. I did speak with our city attorney earlier. And I think that it's important that, you know, when, when we are able to receive state monies to not only, you know, demo old blighted buildings, but also have those properties abated for future use. That's always a good thing. And I, I would also say that in terms of the timing of any demo or abatement, I'm sure that we could work with our state partners to come up with a time that worked for the city of Traverse City. Just because there's an affirmative vote doesn't mean that a truck pulls up tomorrow. I mean, these processes take time and we obviously know that our summer city, you know, our summer season is, is really busy. So with that, you know, I think it's really important that when the state has these dollars and they come to towns like ours, that we avail ourselves of those opportunities and, and work with the state to come up with a, a schedule to demo and abate at a time that's appropriate for us. But at this time, that's all I'm, all I have to say on it.
And I will just say that I was in the agenda review, as was Commissioner Shaw. And she asked a very important question, I thought, which was, is this going to shut down some of the road? And just to clarify that this will not require shutting down any more roads. We already know we have a lot of those right now going on and thought that was a very good question to share with the rest of the commission as well. So this is a, will not require major stoppages. Commissioner Warner?
Yeah, I would float the idea that this be brought back to us again, maybe right after the budget season and not in such a black and white way because the 115 Pine Street is clearly a contaminated site as the dry cleaners. But the neighbor that I refer to as the Buckin property, that's a new build on there with the little townhouse thing. In fact, the former owners reached out to the commission saying, why don't we use it to house some people that are homeless? So to, to put them in the same category that they all need to be razed to the ground for a future development seems a little too black and white. It would be great to understand like, yes, 115 Pine needs raised, needs remediated. Maybe not so much for the Buckin property. And then the other properties, you know, one was an office building. So yes, maybe there are some old pipes wrapped in asbestos in the basement or something. But is there really an urgency? Because one of the concerns expressed at the last meeting where it failed to move forward was by raising all these buildings and not having a plan to move forward as a community, now we're just sitting there with empty lots, which we've had many in the decades here in Traverse City. And so again, maybe it makes sense for some of the properties, but not all of the properties.
I think that's an interesting point, Commissioner Warner, and I'll ask DDA representatives to come up and speak in a moment. I do know that at the DDA level, one of the discussions was, and to your point about the housing, that's interesting, that if these are flattened, that would be surface parking. As we know, that the lot to the north there has already had developments start, start on it. And there was permit parking there for staff, for downtown employees. This, in the temporary times, could be painted and used as such amongst other things. I'm not here to litigate that. I'm just letting everyone know some of the discussions that have been happening at the DDA. I don't know, Harry, if you wanted to come up and address some of these issues or?
Harry Burkholder, interim CEO of the DDA. In regards to the building that Commissioner Warner referenced, I think if we had two phases to demolition, our costs would increase. And I think that's something we need to consider if we're going to approve or not approve all the properties in this project.
And a question about the funding real quick I had is, you know, if we were to phase, also, does that jeopardize any of the funding that we've already been approved for? Was that contingent on the whole tear-down or just the master dry cleaners portion, or the dry cleaners portion or?
I'm going to actually ask James Jackson from Otwell-Moppy, who's been assisting with this project, to answer that question.
Thank you.
So the way the bid packages were put together, they included all the properties. So if we did it in phases, it would likely go up. I'd also say that is, as far as the old barbershop building, we also had an RFP to move that off-site for future use. We did not receive any bidders for that.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, so I guess just in response to that, like I still don't see the need to say raise, again, it's just an example, but the newest building there for something that we don't, we as a community don't have a plan for right now. So yes, it could be used in the interim as a parking lot. But that doesn't mean we need to have a parking lot. Like, that's where I'm at with it. It's like, yes, I'm willing to have 115 Pine razed because no matter what happens and it, it's going to fall down if we don't do something with it. But the Buckin property is relatively new. So again, to me, they're just very different.
I understand that too. I do, guess I am curious, as we're having these discussions tonight, the theme of, you know, some ideas about fiscal responsibility though of, if we do only do it in portions, we are now then looking at incurring a much larger cost because you're bringing a whole new crew in all over again. You're bringing in new workers. You're putting out for new RFP and new contract. So if that would be part of the conversation, it's, it's not a matter of shaving off, you know, 30 grand here and it's going to cost 30 grand later. It's, that's a very different cost amount that we'd be talking about. And I will, sorry, I'll go ahead, but I was going to say, and I will say that while we are working on other solutions and we're talking about TART trails and we have the Bayline, we do have employees that work downtown that do use parking over in that area. And I know it's been causing some issues for some employees, so go ahead. I saw both your hands go up, so I'll go with Heather first.
Well, we don't know what's going in there. There's no plan for what goes into that site. And you, we've basically got three buildings that are viable. You've got the little housing building. You've got that. You've got the little housing building, you've got that, and then there are like two office buildings there, right?
Mm-mm.
Just the one office building. There's two buildings on that east side, one next to the other.
120 and 122.
Harry, do you want to?
So there are two buildings there. I do know that over this past winter, we had, actually, one of the pipes broke in one of those buildings, and we had flooding, so the viability of those buildings being used, I think, is questionable.
Huh. Because there was no, the heat wasn't turned on, or why did the pipes break?
I don't, I have the answer to that. I can find that out, but we know that did happen.
But we take all this stuff down, and then we don't know what's going to hap, it could be one year, it could be five years, it could be 10 years, and we've got a great big dirt. I mean, you could pave it all again, but then that's additional cost as well. I feel like we need a plan. I absolutely support taking out the dry cleaner, and I, it says that there's asbestos contamination throughout, but really, that entire lot is contaminated with asbestos, or is it really mostly focused in where the dry cleaner was?
Yeah, so the older buildings definitely have most of the materials in them. I think beyond just the demolition discussion, this is a component of a bigger project. With the contamination that's there, the purpose of removing the buildings at this point is to really finish that work below the buildings. We've looked at two technologies to date, hand augering, power augering, to get the samples that we need under these buildings, and it's not possible. So really, the component of demolition is to aid in environmental assessment and some cleanup on the site as well. And that'll really be developed based off of the next run of sampling soil, groundwater, soil gas. So, and there is, on top of just, like Harry said, there's some water damage in a building or whatever, there is also vapor intrusion issues here, so some additional assessment and/or mitigation would be needed to occupy those buildings, including the eastern buildings.
Okay, but right now, we've got an old dry cleaner building, which it doesn't look so great. But we've got a small dwelling that, I don't know how many people could stay there, maybe six people could stay there if they were a family. And we have two, the two buildings on the east side, which may be unviable, but they don't look bad. So the, but what we're talking about is raising this whole thing, and just, there's nothing there, it's just a great big dirt pit. And I, you know, we look forward to one year, two year, three year, four year, how long is the site next to the J and S that they're empty?
It's my understanding that the entire site would be ceded and it would be grass, it wouldn't just be a dirt patch.
Oh, I haven't heard that. So it would be a grass parking lot?
I don't, there's no intention to add parking to the grass, it would just be ceded and it would be a grass lot.
Okay.
Will the farmer's market, I mean, is that the only plan you have, like, for the next year?
There are no plans to use that site at all. Really, the plan is to do the mitigation and then green it. Currently.
Tim?
And I guess, like, back to the input on 120, 122 State, sounds like it would need some investment if those buildings were to be occupiable. There again, it would be good for this body to understand, just order of magnitude, what sort of investment, for how many square feet, because maybe there is a tenant out there, not right now, but a year from now, or two years from now, to occupy one of those buildings if money was invested into it versus just raising it and having grass grow for some indeterminate amount of time.
If you want to argue the, like, the having the building sit there versus having green, I will support that. However, I think if you look at the reports from our downtown and from, and Harry, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there's a lot of office space out there right now available. It's been an issue post-COVID everywhere. So I don't know that us putting this out there as a place with a broken pipe that somebody's going to want to invest money into, a type of real estate that's already in excess in our community right now is also very viable either, though, I'm, you know, we can talk about the green versus not, but I'm just.
How much money would need to be invested? You know, is it on the order of $100,000? Is it a quarter million per building? Like, what is it? So that we have a sense of, is it even possible? Because markets change, maybe a year, two years from now, it is viable, whereas I don't disagree that right now, it's a non-starter probably.
I don't feel like this is a decision we have to make right this minute. This grant doesn't run out for a couple more years, we've got a little time to get some plans.
I mean, the longer those buildings sit there, their liabilities, then something should be done.
And I think, Mark, you had pointed out that the dry cleaning buildings have already been tagged and had some other graffiti and such, which, not the end of the world, but if they sit there for years.
Even more of an attractive nuisance once school lets out.
I think that's a little bit, as I look at some of our students in here, I think that's a little stereotypical, but I think that that is reality, no matter what age demographic, of the longer you have empty buildings sitting, that's why we have things to take care of. Jack, you've had your hand up.
Thank you. I, like several others, need to understand the short-term and the long-term plans here before I would vote to approve the abatement and the demolition. I would also like to know where we stand in that two-year timeline and exactly what time urgency there is. I am also curious that, I guess Eagle gave a $900,000 grant for the cleanup efforts, and that we have a proposal before us for less than a third of that, and I wondered, is there something else to come?
Right, so the initial dollars that we're talking about tonight is for the abatement of the asbestos and the demolition, and then the remaining dollars of that grant would then go to serve the other remediation efforts of the soil on the entire site. So we're using a portion of it now to actually get to the site, we can actually do the remediation later on.
Thank you.
My.
So, my question, oh, no, sorry.
Do you know the timing on that Eagle grant? Where we stand in the two years?
Right, so I understand we awarded that grant in 2023, and we have three years to use it.
Thank you.
So the two-year timeline is for the building removal, and then there's an additional three years for the site abatement? Is that correct? Are they two separate grants and two separate timelines?
It's all under one grant that was issued last August 2023, and the grant expires in three years after that, so August of '26. So as Harry indicated, this is only a small portion of that $900,000. The rest goes to the investigation, and then that will really determine what that remediation looks like, whether it's a soil dig, whether it's treatment, there's a number of options that it could be.
So we're slightly less than one year into a three-year?
That's correct.
Window? And, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Pierce, what's the current tax liability for us while it's sitting there?
So my understanding is, right now, the city is on the toll for $80,000 a year in taxes for all of these properties, in addition to some utilities and as well as insurance. So that'd be something you'd be doing in subsequent years as part of this project.
And so this, I'm sorry, this needs to happen before the rest of the grant could potentially be used?
That's correct.
So the demolition, the initial demolition, asbestos and assessment needs to be done before the rest of the grant could be activated?
Correct.
Okay.
And my question was, goes back to that of, so let's say we start digging in August, just throwing it out there, no guarantees, please don't hold me to that anywhere, and we discover that there's a lot more, there are a lot more issues in the soil than we thought. What's a timeline like that look like? And what I'm really trying to put out here is, we like to think we have two years, but as we get into this, and we get into some of the remediation and how that treatment and such goes, what's the realistic timeline? These things don't happen within a month after you discover them.
Yeah, so as of right now, based on schedules with the contractors that were low bid, it would probably be the fall before we could actually get out there. There's a number of things that need to happen before that. And then really, the timeline is pretty critical to get the investigation done, because depending on what the outcome of what we find is, there's different avenues that could take multiple months, you know, for permits or waste disposal licensing, you know, it varies. So until we can get under the buildings and really find out what's there and determine what the extent is, and what a remediation plan would really look like, it's kind of speculative.
Thank you, and that's kind of where I go, too, of, I think often, it seems like everybody just wants to work for the city of Traverse City, and I'm sure they do, because we're great to work for and work with. But we have to, when we get into processes like this, we have to get into RFPs, we have to do vetting, we have to get on people's schedules. So it's not as simple as we vote for something and two months later, it's going to start happening, and then, you know, six months later, it's a done deal. It's part of the reason why Eagle both gives us a lot, a larger window on this, but also part of that, I think it got brought up in our last discussion, is there's a contingency amount of money in there that's not for if we take a couple extra months and costs go up, that's for if we find out underneath the surface is even worse than we imagined. And that's what happens with some of these projects when we start digging in. So I guess I would put that out there to remind people that this isn't a quick fix project.
The other thing I would say, that these are city parcels, so any improvements to those buildings right now would be at the expense of the city.
Hmm.
So are you saying that if we, if we don't complete the entire project by August 2026, we won't receive the grant money?
Great question.
So the grant funds are only reimbursed for what is spent, so if there's anything that is unused, that would then go back to Eagle.
But if we're still, let's say, and we, everything gets delayed, or there's this huge problem or something, and remediation or anything goes into 2027, I think that's what you're trying to ask?
That could be a possibility, that would be something that the state.
But we'd have to go back to them, get social permissions.
The state would have to evaluate that and whether they, you know, had an option to move forward.
It's not a given.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tim?
Well, just, to me, it's, I guess, a little disappointing. This was not approved last time in front of us, and concerns were expressed, and it's brought back to us in the same exact form without, I mean, I guess you addressed the concern of traffic in the streets, but as far as not having a plan, maybe some details about the difference between the buildings not being black and white. So, yeah, like, somebody can make a motion, but it's, without having a plan, and there's still plenty of time, I don't see the urgency. And so I'm still here to not be supportive of it, but I could be supportive of a more nuanced approach to it and a better understanding.
My.
As I recall, one of the sticking points on the previous discussion was the optics around this and the moving downtown forward and the possible building of a parking deck, which had yet to be approved, and the questions around continuation of TIF. Whether or not that Moving Downtown Forward Plan moves forward, the parking deck has been taken out of the plan, so I think it is a bit of a different situation, because one of the sticking points is not on the table now. I would like clarity about when the environmental issues are or are not a priority. I would like clarity about when fiscal responsibility is and is not a priority. I think we have opportunity for green space and pocket parks. When is green space or not a priority? But I do see that this is a different scenario at being brought forward, because the parking deck is not part of this discussion. It is materially different at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanley. Are there any other comments from the commission? Yes, Jackie?
Perhaps Mayor Shamro, you could clarify, the last DDA meeting that I attended, I thought there were at least a subset of the DDA board that was challenging that decision to leave the parking deck out of the Moving Downtown Forward Plan?
I was not at the last study session last Friday, but the meeting before, there were public comments asking for it, but I don't recall, not to my, or not to my feeling of intention in the conversations, where people suddenly jumping back on that train. Also, I'd like to remind this commission, at the end of the day, the DDA puts forward a plan to us, we are the ones who pass it. We can always take a parking deck out if they try to put, if it gets put back in, if that is the will of this commission.
Just to clarify, in the latest draft of the TIF plan for that site, the parking portion of that development was removed, however, the housing component is still in the draft TIF plan.
Thank you.
So yes, that is one thing that potentially in the next couple of years could be part of the discussion, is housing there, depending on how the TIF plan goes. But there is no TIF plan put forward to us right now, so that's not even a discussion right now. And again, at the end of the day, it is our final call, what is in that TIF plan. So.
I have a question for our consultant with Otwell. In the current condition of that space, any future building would require soil Phase One, Phase Two assessments of those sites for anything to be, that would potentially be built there?
Yeah, so, well, anything going forward, you know, is part of a commercial due diligence process, Phase Ones, and maybe Twos are needed. We've collected a lot of data, some of that data could be used, you know, for a potential future development, future purchaser, if that was the case. There's definitely more data that needs to be collected to evaluate uses, whether it's, you know, soil management for a construction project, vapor intrusion for occupying the current buildings, for future buildings. And right now, the data gaps exist because those buildings are there. Where we need to look is under those. And technology, right now, we can't get to the depths that we need to with what's available with the buildings there.
And then I just have a few more questions. So you've got some bids that are good for, you know, for contractors this fall. If the city commission were to say, no, we're not interested tonight, ultimately, that would push that down the road. It might need to go out to rebid if then they're not available in the fall, they'd have to be then available in 2025. At what point are we getting too close to the deadline of this grant to actually be able to use all the funds?
So the remaining funds are really going to be dictated by what we can do based on what we find. So the values we know right now are in that packet and what we've spent with investigation to date. The remaining could shape how we look at remediation. There could be different technologies used, it could be a soil dig, it could be treatments. We really need to get at additional data to make that call and what that could look like and what the costs are. That will certainly be a part of what we do in the future if this moves forward.
Okay, so, I was just going to, well, go ahead, Commissioner Werner.
Well, just as far as maybe future discussion, and along the lines of some of the things you brought up and was mentioned as far as housing, can the city commission move forward with this property independent of DDA intent or wishes? Like, is this, and sorry that our city attorney's not here, but is, my understanding, this is city property, not DDA property, but do we have any legal responsibility to defer to the DDA? So say, for example, in our strategic planning, if we decide, you know what, housing, and maybe on a third of this, we'd like housing, and then a third will be parking, and the other third will be a grass lot, and we could move forward with that?
No, you, you're not legally obligated to defer to the DDA on this.
Thank you.
The, how the funding and everything would work for that would be something we'd have to very much discuss. So yes. So with that, sorry, I appreciate the question, we do not have a motion, though. Would anybody like to make a motion?
You guys already had to hear me read. Struggle so hard.
I make the recommendation that the mayor and city clerk execute a funding agreement with the Traverse City Downtown Development Authority, DDA, which articulates that the DDA will reimburse the city of Traverse City using grant funds that received from Michigan Development of Great Lakes Environmental Energy for the West State Street development cleanup efforts as generally outlined in the February 29, 2024 communication with the DDA interim CEO. And further that, the mayor and city clerk execute an agreement with Taplin Enterprises in the amount of $129,424 for abatement of asbestos for properties at 115 Pine Street, 126 West State Street, 122 West State Street, and 120 West State Street, the properties. And further that, the mayor and city clerk execute an agreement with Pisch companies in the amount of $111,500 for demolition of the properties, with agreements subject to approval as to their substance by the city manager and to their form by the city attorney.
Okay, we got a motion from Treadwell, second by Wilson. Any further comments before we open up to a public comment? Okay, any public comment on this item?
Justin Reed, Traverse City resident. Yeah, so those properties that you, that you mentioned, well, if there is any site type of any construction or any development that's in go there, those gaps would have to be looked at. And the only, the only way that those soil contamination or any environmental hazards that'll be looked at are those buildings being demolished and documented that there is any soil contamination to show those gaps in the data and can provide a very large help to the city on, to figure out those uses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Caroline Kennedy, 1925 Seneca Street. So just a couple points for consideration. So $900,000 from Eagle, almost a million bucks, right, in state money. Those are state taxes that we pay, right? And goes on, we, we pay taxes to the state, and sometimes we're lucky enough to get them back into our community, to spend in our community. So we've got this grant opportunity and funding right now, we've got contractors right now, we've got this set to go. I don't understand why people want to kick the can down the road when we've been so recently criticized about how much the cost goes up for everything that gets delayed. I mean, if you look at the senior center and all of those costs, and if we don't have these grant monies because we have delayed it, that's coming out of my pocket then, right? And all of the other residents, unless we just leave those parcels contaminated. So I don't understand where the rub comes in here. And I think it's also important for elected officials in any city to consider the fact that you don't have these discussions in a vacuum. The officials from Eagle, GNR, any of the other grant funding sources that we work with and on a federal level as well, they award grants on a competitive basis based on the reliability, they're, they're based on the quality of the project, what it's going to be used for, reliability, that it's going to get completed and done, and that the city is going to be successful in that project. And when we keep sending these delay messages, I think we undermine our own standing with our granting authorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Voll, 686 Bay Hill Drive, Apartment 9. You guys are talking about a million dollars, as this lady just said, for these buildings and so forth, but yet we have two roads that you guys have not brought up or even talked about or put on the agenda. The county side of Veterans Drive at the Garfield Township Hall, down to 14th, and then 14th down to Union are horrible. And you guys talk about buildings and everything else, but yet our roads aren't getting done. Yes, the Parkway is getting done, yes, you know, going out towards the peninsula is getting the roundabouts, M22 is getting roundabouts, but yet two main roads in your area, under your authority, are being overlooked. And I know Beta has even mentioned, and drivers have mentioned, about 14th and Veterans Drive being on the city side are horrible, and they're not getting done. Instead of bill, spending a million dollars on buildings, you guys really, really need to look at Veterans Drive and 14th Street. And those sidewalks being redone in front of the Eagles, in front of the football stadium, and so forth, so that way people could also get around. And also, a sidewalk does need to be put on the Veterans Drive side, going up over the hill, and I've seen many almost near misses going up Veterans Drive from 14th up towards Walmart in the mall, because there's no sidewalks there. And I see people in wheelchairs, motorized carts, almost getting clipped right on that curb because it's a blind curve. And you guys really need to take a look at that as a city government in getting done as soon as possible, because if this continues, those roads are just going to get worse and worse. And as winter comes for this upcoming year, those roads are starting to heave even more. You're going to have broken vehicles and so forth. And you got two roads that need to be done instead of, of buildings being done, period.
Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. And I did just want to say that I didn't comment before, and I should have before opening public comment, so. I do, I like, several people have mentioned up here, it pains me to see the relatively new build potentially being torn down with this, but I also know that we deal with winters here in Michigan, and we have Eagle money that's very limited, and considering we know is under that dry cleaner there, and if we think back to what's been on that corner there over the decades and what possible other contaminants could be under there, you know, this money is from Eagle and for cleanup, and we really don't know what's under there until we start digging around. And so I think there is a bit of a time is of the essence despite what I think the perception might be, and we all like to think 2026 is really far away, and it kind of is, but not when we start getting into some of the major, quite frankly, bureaucracy and red tape that can go with some of this cleanup. I'd love for it to be something we snap our fingers and just say, yep, we did it, the contractors are here, September, we dug around, and by January, we've got an answer, and come April, we're going to be able to do this remediation, and by the end of 2025, it's all done and done, and we didn't even have to get in, worry about 2026. But that's often not how these projects work, and there's often unhappy surprises when we start digging into these.
And $900,000 is not a whole lot of money if we need to dig up and remove a whole lot of contaminated soil, depending on how far down that goes and what the groundwater levels are and what the overall status of the project is. So this will take up, these two contracts will take a chunk of that $900,000, but it does leave a lot left to that unknown amount of below-surface dirt remediation.
Potentially, yes.
I would personally like to kick this can down past the budget and strategic planning, so just a couple more months along. I'd like more information on what the space is going to look like, if it's, if nothing is built on it over the next year, two years, three years, what, what are you, what are we going to do with it? And I would hope that the Buchanan property could be used for some way, special guest facility for, there's got to be some way for the city to use that property. But just a few more months to get some ideas of how, what, what the plan is, just for the next year or two years, if it's empty.
So I just want to clarify that strategic planning, we've identified the firms that are going to help us, and we hopefully will enter into contacts, contracts with them in May and June, but the actual soft start will be late August into September. Those plans take a month, not just a few months, to put together. So if you're waiting for a final strategic plan, you're looking at spring of next year, so that's 12 months, that's not just a few months. So I just want to clarify expectations on that strategic planning process and don't want to unnecessarily hold up something else because there's an expectation that we're going to have some sort of, something in three months.
Also, just to clarify, and it's kind of gone back and forth of how it's been referred to over the last few meetings, the strategic plan is not going to be a drill down of parcel by parcel, project by project as we go through this. As was raised earlier, it will highlight things like transportation, mobility, and higher, hierarching, things like that, but getting into the exact projects that we want to do on certain corners or even in certain parts of the city at large is not necessarily going to, is not going to be a result of this project. So I think as we talk about strategic plan, lest it become a mythical thing that's going to have all of our answers, it won't. And it's been referred to in several different ways, more along the lines of what it's going to be, and I think sometimes a little bit too, maybe it feels like it's, we're going to be looking for too many granular answers that probably aren't going to be there even a year from now.
And I guess just as a final thought, the further down the road this gets kicked, the, the consequences become more acute. So what are those? One, the money will do less for us if it costs more to do something later. We are at risk of losing some of the funding if we aren't able to use it all by the time that the grant period ends. And I do think we're at a risk of how we look to, to granting agencies, state, federal granting agencies. So just for consideration, that we will have to do the same amount of work with less money potentially as prices go up and as the cost of labor goes up. As we all know, because the board just approved five union contracts with 15% increases in wages over the next three years. So just for, for thought.
Go ahead, Mark.
And it costs us money every year that they sit there, so we know the next couple of years will go quick.
Any further comments? All right, call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
No.
Mayor Proton Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
No.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes, motion fails. All right, moving on to our next item, we're going to be discussing the resolution of the Grandview Parkway project. This is just for an MOU, correct, or just a resolution?
This is an LO, oh, thank you, Mayor Shamro. This is, at the April 8 study session, the commission was given a presentation regarding the 2025 Grandview Parkway project. Attached is a related resolution and letter of understanding, which articulates the support that MDOT will provide to the project as well as the city. And so the LOU is attached, and I'd leave it at that.
Any questions about this item?
No, they just, they chose to come tonight.
Well, I was actually going to give a quick, brief pause after this, but you can also, if you do need to get signatures and go home, you can also have staff sign in, it doesn't just have to be a commissioner.
Can we just have a two-minute pause?
Okay, we'll have a five-minute break. Everybody come get your signatures.
Wait, before, before you sign, ask them what we were just talking about.
Yeah. All right, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you.
I want to see it. I want to see it in writing, that they're going to put grass.
That was the first time I heard.
I don't believe.
Okay. It's not a charitable gift.
Well, I need it to support to use the grant. If they're going to start with the grass, I want to see it.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a way bigger picture.
As the grass is a little bit.
It was exactly the same.
Anybody want to make a motion? Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Warner?
Yeah, so, two things. One, I find it interesting that in the resolution, the calls to, the intent is to slow traffic and increase safety for all users. Do we have any details on what those elements being incorporated might be to do, achieve that?
No, that's why this is the letter of understanding, so we can enter into the discussions.
Yeah, but this is saying we agree to move forward when I don't know that there's anything that we agree on, like the median width, we could have avoided the conversation earlier this evening about the current portion of the project if the median had been narrowed. So here's our opportunity, before we say, yeah, MDOT, whatever you want, to negotiate with MDOT, and not this body as a whole saying, oh, well, maybe we don't need a 12-foot median, maybe it could be eight feet or six feet or something like that. But to have somebody truly negotiating on our behalf for something narrower, I get it, MDOT's concerned with distracted drivers leading, leaving the roadway and going into oncoming traffic. In the earlier, current stage it's being built, that was discussed as a, not leaving the roadway, but it was a positive as far as friction in opposing traffic because that's traffic calming and slows people down. But now in this section, we're being told by MDOT, they want people to be able to go faster, they don't say faster, but essentially that's what it is, because by not going slower, you're going faster. And they want them to be able to safely leave the roadway, frankly, which to me is just not, that's not a priority for me, and I don't think for a lot of citizens who would, with that limited park space, not have park used by a median, but have park used as a park, and then we can have the discussion. Do we want a wider trail by the bay? Do we want to keep the amount of park that's currently between the Parkway and Bay Street? But I'm not prepared to support this until we either as a body say, nope, whatever MDOT wants, or what is it that we're trying to get out of this agreement?
Does anybody have any questions or other comments right now?
But it was my understanding that this is just the resolution to go into discussion.
That is correct.
But who's going to discuss, and what will they discuss?
I mean, that's up to the city commission.
When, when will we, when will we? When, when will we, when will we have that discussion about what, what we will discuss, and who will discuss it?
My understanding is that already our planners and engineers have been involved in the discussions, is that correct?
The discussions have been ongoing, yes.
Exactly, and so, they're discussing on our behalf, but we don't know what they're advocating for. Specific, say, to the median, how wide, how wide would our community like that median to be?
This was brought up in that previous discussion, though, of the community meetings that have already been held, as far as our community. Commissioner Stanley, a resident of the neighborhood, talked about that, as well as several neighbors got up to talk about their engagement in the process as well.
Yeah, but the public generally, and it's no disparagement of the public, much of the public avoids MDOT because they know how MDOT operates. They listen, and they, frankly, they have this feeling about us as well sometimes. But the, MDOT will listen, pat them on the head, send them on their way, and do what, MDOT will do what MDOT wants to do.
That's...
But, so, as far as attending an MDOT meeting to provide input is much different than attending a city commission meeting and telling us what they would like to see, knowing we have this 1947 agreement where we have leverage. We can say, "Hey, let's sit down at a table," not this whole body, but a representative for the city, "sit down at a table with MDOT and hash out some of those details about how best to use limited park space."
Your broad sweeping statement of MDOT is very interesting to me, because I've seen them come to, for example, my neighborhood and meeting to discuss certain plans, take copious notes, come back and report on things that were adjusted as such. I also would argue that we have meetings a lot, and sometimes we have rooms full of people, and sometimes we have two on items that have been told by other commissioners, by commissioners up here, that this is vitally important, and we need to get all the feedback we can. So, I guess what I'm asking is for more clarification of what does that look like to you?
Looks like, to me, like looking at the different options. Qualitatively, getting input from various members of our immediate community, and then, we as a body showing some leadership and deciding what should be done with limited park space.
Commissioner Stanley?
Speaking specifically about this section of the MDOT project, and specifically about MDOT's openness to receiving feedback, having attended their community meeting at the Elmwood Township Hall, where they presented the various options for the Bay Street, M-22 and M-72 intersection, they were very, very clear that it was important to them to lay out for us what was available. That included closing Bay Street off, which was a non-starter for the Slab Town neighborhood where I live, and my, for my neighbors. They were frankly surprised to hear that there was so much support for a roundabout, which I think has long been the clear solution for that interchange. So, while I understand the frustration of some in this community with some of the things that have happened in MDOT projects, I, I have seen inaction and have participated in the public comment and public engagement where MDOT has been receptive. I also think it's important to remember that we are not subject matter experts. We are in our, about our community, but not in terms of what the engineering is going to be like. And so, there are options that we think may be on the table that are not, for various reasons, including legal ones. And I think it's, I also, I am hopeful that the release of the current attorney-client privilege information that we approved earlier this evening can have, we can have some more robust discussion about what the 1947 agreement does and does not afford us in terms of leverage in this situation. So, have we had a motion on this yet?
No.
No.
So, I'd like to make the motion that the resolution regarding the letter of understanding for the project coordination of 2025 M-72 and M-22 reconstruction from U.S. 31 Division Street to Cherry Bend Road, job numbers JN 2025-18 and 24-066, which incorporates the letter of understanding related to the project be adopted.
Support.
Thank you. Motion for Commissioner Stanley, seconded by Treadwell.
To the median topic, again, because, it's my understanding that whatever median ends up being there, the city's responsible for its upkeep and maintenance. And so, we're maintaining beautiful parkland that nobody can, well, maybe somebody can stand on it and have a picnic if they really wanted to, but practically speaking, it's unusable. And so, to me, that's all the more reason to minimize the width of that median, provide it either to the bayside or to the landward side for people, for people to use it. If we, as a city, are going to pay to irrigate it, to plant trees, replant the trees when they're knocked down, replant the trees when they're knocked down, irrigate some more, mow some more, why don't we do that for park space where people can actually enjoy it, and not for a median?
Well, I'm just gonna go, since that we don't have MDOT representatives here right now, go back to that discussion and say that...
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do, sorry, guys, I didn't see you over there in the corner. Come on up. I believe that last time, what was mentioned, though, was the reason for the median taking from the parkland is that that is shown to be safer for people crossing where we want people crossing there. And I believe that this goes into what was just mentioned by Commissioner Stanley of having planners and our engineers, not elected representatives, putting our input into that.
Yeah, so, MDOT's perspective on the median is that it's important that we have a median, median. If it's gonna accommodate lighting and trees, it should be at least eight feet wide. It's 12 feet is what we're proposing, that's better for, for various reasons. The more space we have from, you know, fixed objects, things, the better, the more pedestrian refuge we have, the better. But, since the lighting, trees, and the maintenance is city responsibility, we're largely leaving that up to the city. We're meeting tomorrow morning with city staff to kind of hash out, or get input on what's desired from the city there.
So, we already have you meeting with city staff, that's great, thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Was it in February that we saw the plans for the?
No, it was just a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
That sounds about right, I guess.
Well, whoever was there, whoever was here from MDOT said that the, the wider median was to protect drivers who might be distracted by the bay view, so...
Right, so it's important to have a median, right? It's, that's a huge safety benefit to have, to, for it to not just be traffic, you know, against, with no separation.
A median, a, a small median is fine. I, I will point out that there is no median on the Mackinac Bridge, and that's a pretty amazing view, and people do manage to get across that. But we're sacrificing green space on the base, on, on, off Bay Street to get this very wide median that we have to take care of, and, and you shouldn't be looking at the bay when you're driving your car. I'm sorry, but that's it. So, but I'm taking this at face value. Resolution regarding letter of understanding for project coordination, so, it's not a done deal yet, right? We still have room to negotiate.
Yeah, we're still working with, we're still working out, working through concerns, we're, we're trying to listen to everybody. Yeah, there's, there's a group in, in Slab Town that's concerned that we're moving it closer, that's why we're looking harder at the median width. There's been concern with the, you know, the crossing on 72 with, at the roundabout is, is tough. You know, it's a challenging crossing. We're still looking at, at ways to make that wider and maybe bring that closer together. So, there's, there's lots of things we're still looking at, too.
Right. Commissioner Werner?
Yeah, specific to the trees, and this isn't on MDOT, but it's my understanding that MDOT does not allow the city to plant what I would consider canopy trees, so an oak or a maple that could grow substantial. They have to be more decorative trees, or at least that's what we've had historically there. So, again, if we had a narrower median, and we, as a community, decided to plant trees outside of that, and wherever MDOT says is far enough away, we could plant real trees. We could plant some canopy trees, you know, whether it's oak, maple, some other species, and not just the decorative trees, which, again, they're, they're decorations, and that's fine, we can have decorations, but we also talk about being a tree city and having real trees.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I know, in general, though, we're, we're just trying to put out, as far as landscaping goes in general, the city maintains that. We, we're just trying to put out what the city wants for that.
So, again, it's landscaping in general, it doesn't even have to be trees, it could be native grass, it could be something else.
Yeah.
Great.
We're kind of defaulting to city for that.
Yeah, and again, I'm gonna go back to...
Whatever wants to be maintained.
Yeah, great, and I, I appreciate that kind of openness to the discussion of what's there. Again, I would go back to what Commissioner Shaw has pointed out, is this is just to enter into the understanding and continue the conversations that have already begun. Commissioner Anderson?
I'd just like to say thank you. I'm glad to hear that the discussion around the median and, and the, the land use issues surrounding this are, are ongoing. Because frankly, from the prior conversation, it seemed to me as though the petition that had been provided from the residents of Slab Town, which had 80-some signatures on it, with their concerns about the width of the median and, and road noise and other impact on their neighborhoods, was given rather short shrift, so I'm delighted to hear that those conversations are still going on. Thank you.
Do we have further questions or a motion?
I already made the motion.
A motion, sorry, that's right, thank you. Okay, so, any further questions or discussion before I put it over to the public? Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
Fred Bimber, 1223 Randolph Street, I'm a city resident. I live in Slab Town. I've signed the petition that's concerned about the width of the median. My concern is that a median of that width is directly involved in taking away what is, in essence, parkland, the grassy strip along Bay Street that provides a wonderful opportunity for families, including a lot of young children, to walk and bicycle safely. It's clear that a median does not have to be 12 feet wide. We have a far narrower median up and down Division Street that serves the basic purpose of avoiding head-on collisions between opposing traffic. That should be done here as well. Narrow it down from 12 feet. There's no good reason to plant a few ornamental trees in a median of that size. Let's narrow it, let's reduce the encroachment, or eliminate the encroachment, onto what is, in essence, parkland along Bay Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Reed, city resident. So, talking about the noise along Grandview Parkway and Bay Street, is, there's pretty much only two options, really. One, go ahead and put some trees, put some vegetation and berm along that one side between Bay and the Tart Trail. Or, put a sound wall up, because if you put a sound wall up, you'll still have people all complaining, "Well, I can't see the bay now." Or maybe even the vegetation, trees out, that might, you know, be put up, "Oh, I can't see the bay now." So, it's either dealing with a little bit of noise, or blocking your view of the bay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item?
If I could just have...
You only get one per, I'm sorry. You, you, it's only one per, so...
I, I was far less than three minutes.
Yeah, but it's...
The comment I would make, Mayor Shamro, is that I do think there is a valid concern here expressed by Commissioner Werner, that if the letter of understanding is signed in advance forward, where is there going to be the focus on actually seeing what can be done about narrowing the median? I think it's just gonna be, well, it's gonna be discussed in backrooms by staff and engineers without any actual motive to see that median reduced. And I think that's what the residents, most of the residents of Slab Town really want to see.
Sean Winter, 1402 Arnold Court, city resident. I'm here as a city resident speaking. As you engage in this conversation about the median width, all right, yes, there's a safety component for drivers. There's also a huge safety component for pedestrians. As a parent who just recently had a daughter learn to ride her own bike, she was in a trailer forever. You put in a median like at Division Street, which was only able to be put in by the vote of the voters, who were agreed to give up some parkland so they can make the Parkway wide enough for that, we can't cross with that pedestrian refuge. When you have a bike and a child in a trailer, and you want to talk about most vulnerable users, in my world, that child behind me is the most vulnerable user. If you narrow that, we don't get that refuge island anymore. When those residents are carrying their kayaks and paddle boards and they have to queue up, because most time when you cross that Parkway, you're doing a two-phase cross. At Oak Elmwood, you cross to the middle, and you wait with your kayak, your bikes, the other people that are crossing with you. There is value in that to the pedestrian, and I encourage you to think about that as you have these discussions, because that's how you make connections to the trail and the parks and the waterway, is making it safe to get across that Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none? Commissioner Werner?
Yep, it's me again. So, the crossing at Elmwood actually has a HOCS signal, which stops traffic in both directions. So, it's safer and faster to cross if there's not a delay on the median. We could have a shorter crossing distance for all users. And so, I would contend that it would be safer if we did not have a median there.
Thank you. I would just gonna, to the comment that was before, we've had MDOT up here now saying that they have the petition of the residents, that that's being discussed, that staff's entering into that discussion. So, I, I just wanted to put that out there to reiterate that that is part of the discussions that is going on out there right now, as Commissioner Anderson acknowledged as well, too, that she was relieved to hear that, as I think we all are. So, that is going forward as part of the discussion, and has been stated up here in public as well. So, with that, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, we're going to move now to Liz. You've got a presentation on permanent supportive housing.
Yes, can I have a moment to set that up, ma'am?
Sure thing.
Thank you. I have a presentation, and then I will come back to the dais for the agenda item for the budget amendment, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do I need to? Arm of desktop? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, let's... Yeah, right.
There we go. I was gonna take a break.
Okay.
Can we do that? Thank you. All right.
Thank you, as we worked out the technical aspect of the presentation. I'm really pleased to stand before you today with a brief update on the work that's been done over the last many weeks with our community partners on the topic of housing and homelessness in our community. Today's presentation is the culmination of the feedback that the city has received from community partners, including the public comment that we received at meetings, emails from the community members. And it's a result of a lot of partnerships and collaboration. And although I come into the middle of this discussion, I just want to say that I feel like this is a, a beginning. And it, the, the presentation offers many components of the solutions that are needed as we face homelessness in Traverse City. So, before you, I'd like to talk a little bit about outreach first, some things that we're going to be doing this spring and in the fall to have a community dialogue on the topics of housing and homelessness. Some solutions we've identified for short-term triage, as Safe Harbor has recently closed, and our homeless are now living in an area called The Pines. Mid- and long-term strategies, and then some strategic planning opportunities that hopefully will coalesce with all these efforts. So, as we've discussed many times, the more that we can engage with the public and talk about these subjects together, the better. And there was a book that was recently published called Homelessness is a H... And there was a book that was recently published called Homelessness is a Housing Crisis by Professor Greg Holburn, and it was co-authored. Many in the community who support the efforts for housing, including the Coalition, have read this book. And I'm proud to say that Northern Michigan, Northwestern Michigan College, the Traverse Area District Library, our Human Resources Commission, and the Coalition are committed to bringing forth a community read around this, centered around this book, and bringing the author in for a presentation and a moderated discussion in the fall. So, those discussions are ongoing. They are in infancy, but everyone in those, there's at least one person within all those organizations, usually the principal, that are aware that it's happening. And there will be more announcements on this in early June. Additionally, we are having a joint meeting, which is a housing workshop. It's a unique opportunity for the city commission, the DDA, and the Planning Commission to come together to talk about all different types of housing and how they are put into a zoning atlas. We will have a presentation made by this group called Flywheel, who's working on the zoning atlas in other communities in Northern Michigan. And the date for that has been set for June 18th. And although it's a joint meeting, it's also a way to interact, to do some scenario-based discussions on different types of housing and what those, what those mean for our community. So, June 18th, and the public is welcome and encouraged to attend. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about some short-term goals that we've identified. Within the Pines themselves, we'd like to keep that space safe for our law enforcement, our police and fire, and EMS. There was some tree trimming, tree trimming conducted. It's complete and it's, it just was meant to, again, be, make a safe place for the people who are residing within the Pines and safety for our public officials. And I'd like to go to that last bullet point. We are budgeting. We did receive feedback from the North Boardman Business District that they'd like some more garbage cans, waste receptacles, and so we are adding four more to our contract that will be placed along Eighth Street in the Novo district this summer. And then I'd like to speak to triage and what are we going to do with the situation that's in front of us. And I do have a prepared statement regarding, regarding this effort. Imagine for a moment the indignity of not having a safe and clean place to relieve oneself. It's a fundamental human need, and yet for many individuals experiencing homelessness, it's a daily struggle. Without access to proper sanitation, they are forced to resort to degrading alternatives, risking their health and diminishing their sense of self-worth. Access to clean water is not just about hydration, it's about hygiene and sanitation. It's about preventing the spread of disease and maintaining the basic standards of health. By providing clean water sources, we not only preserve physical well-being, but also restore a sense of dignity to those who have been marginalized by society. And in today's digital age, access to electricity is more than just a luxury, it's a lifeline. It's a means of communication, connection, and empowerment. For many individuals experiencing homelessness, a charged phone is their link to vital resources, job opportunities, and support networks. By ensuring access to electricity, we not only enable them to stay connected, but also reaffirm their right to participate fully in society. Our community partners, who are in the trenches, including street outreach and those with Munson, who operate the mobile clinic, have shared with us how important it is for the homeless to have their mobile devices charged. I am proud to share that thanks to the unwavering support of the local philanthropic partners we have in Traverse City, they have raised $50,000 dedicated to addressing the immediate needs of our homeless population. But why is this triage effort so crucial as we work towards the permanent solution, which is more housing? The evidence is clear, addressing the immediate needs of individuals experiencing homelessness not only improves their quality of life, but also enhances their readiness for long-term solutions. Research has shown that providing access to basic facilities like toilets, water, and electricity can lead to better physical and mental health outcomes, increased engagement with support services, and ultimately, a smoother transition into stable housing. We are also optimistic that supplying these assets will begin to address neighborhood concerns. So, the city, in conjunction with the Community Foundation, Rotary Charities, the Olson Foundation, and others, who I'm not naming, I don't have the list in front of me, have helped to secure funding to provide two portable toilets, two sinks, the festival sinks you might see. And we've ordered two solar-powered benches that each can charge up to four phones at one time. And those would be installed in the park on 11th near Division. In order to protect and secure these assets, it is our fiduciary responsibility to protect the assets that we rent or purchase. We will be installing a security camera. We can have the toilets and sinks installed this Friday. We are cautiously optimistic we can get it done by this Friday. The solar-powered chairs have been put on expedited order, and they should ship on Friday. So, these are new to us. We're excited about the opportunity to provide these assets to this community. And again, these are triage efforts as we look towards the mid- and long-term goals, which I will speak to next. Our midterm goals. So, with the budget, I am recommending an additional community police officer, providing the opportunity to have one officer in the Pine Central Neighborhood and one in our North Boardman District and Boardman Neighborhood. We heard time and time again from the community that community policing works, and when it's there, everyone feels safer, the community feels better. And we heard that, and that is why I'm recommending an additional officer. An additional police social worker. We have one social worker, and getting individuals into the QRT, getting them to the services that they need, has been a heavy lift. And we think adding one more will, will increase the ability for us to get homeless individuals connected to the services and connected also to the agencies that can help get them into permanent supportive housing. Finally, I'm recommending funding community court. And this is in early discussions with our district judges, but in partnership with the district court, they are underway. And these special court programs are designed to address legal issues of individuals experiencing homelessness in a supportive and rehabilitative environment, providing another off-ramp out of their situation. Long-term goals. As we've heard Ryan from Goodwill Industries say, "The only known cure for homelessness is a house." So, how do we get there? Well, I am asking the city commission in this next agenda item to support a funding gap, a contract for services, not a charitable donation, to help get 17 homeless individuals into permanent supportive housing by August and another 10 by January. Looking into supporting more permanent supportive housing, continue to support pilots that include permanent supportive housing, and working with the community partners, and to communicate the progresses we make as we get individuals into those units. I have lots of speeches prepared, so you'll have to forgive me. I would like to speak to the value proposition of pilot program in general. And we just approved another one tonight, and that one on Eighth Street, with the approval of the resolution that was in the consent agenda that we didn't speak about. But that is another now fully funded pilot that, the property's in escrow, and now they can move forward. So, what is the value proposition of a pilot program? I'm not sure that we've talked about it since I've been here. But communities that implement payment in lieu of taxes, or pilot, as we call them, provide unique benefits to the community. First, their support for vulnerable populations. Pilot programs demonstrate a commitment to supporting vulnerable populations, such as homeless and low-income workers, which can lead to improved social equity and inclusion. It addresses, in part, housing affordability. Pilot programs can incentivize the development of affordable housing units, helping to address housing affordability and challenges. This is particularly important in regions facing housing shortages and rising rental costs. Economic development. Affordable housing initiatives supported by pilot programs can contribute to economic development by attracting businesses and workers to the area. Adequate housing options for workers can enhance workforce retention and productivity, ultimately benefiting the local economy. Fiscal stability. While pilot programs may reduce property tax revenue in the short term, they can contribute to long-term fiscal stability by addressing social issues like homelessness and housing insecurity. Stable housing can lead to improved health outcomes and reduce strain on public services, potentially offsetting any initial revenue loss. Community cohesion. Investing in housing for vulnerable populations fosters a sense of community cohesion and compassion. It can encourage collaboration between local government, business, nonprofit organizations, and residents to address broader social challenges. And I think that we're already seeing the result of that community cohesion here tonight with the work that's been done to raise those funding for those triage efforts. And finally, social responsibility. Pilot programs reflect a community's social responsibility and commitment to addressing homelessness and housing inequity. This can enhance the community's reputation and attractiveness to residents, businesses, and investors who prioritize social impact. As I mentioned earlier, we are moving forward with strategic planning, which is a holistic approach to looking at all the things that we're trying to prioritize and fund. We need to prioritize the things that we'd want to do, and we need to fund, fund them as well. So, strategic planning will link strategy to budget. It will define both the short-term actions and long-term objectives needed to address homelessness as one facet of the whole strategic plan. It'll help us prioritize resource allocation, and it will provide a monitoring and evaluation framework, so we can see how we're doing along the way, see if we've hit any roadblocks, and what we might need to do to make those course corrections as we implement the strategic plan. So, at this time, that is the end of my presentation on the things that I've budgeted for in connection with the housing and homelessness situation in the 2025 budget. And I would like an opportunity to return to the dais to speak to the agenda item before us.
Please do.
Thank you.
We don't really stand on ceremony here like that, so you can always feel free to-
Sorry. Thank you. I know I've just read a lot, but what I write, I write from the heart. So, I'm going to read the memo, the executive summary that I put in the board packet, if that's okay. Goodwill Industries of Northern Michigan, by board resolution, which is attached, is requesting $360,000 to immediately begin the process of housing those experiencing chronic homelessness. This need stems from the ability to begin housing individuals now, but the low-income housing tax credit, or LIHTC credit, does not become available until June of 2025. The proposed permanent supportive housing located at East Bay Flats represents a beacon of hope for those who have long endured the hardships of homelessness. As Goodwill awaits LIHTC funding, we find ourselves at a critical juncture, a moment where decisive action can make a profound difference in the lives of our most vulnerable community members. The funding request, and again, this is a request for a contract of services of $360,000, is not just an investment, it's a lifeline for those desperately seeking stability and security. By allocating this budget, we can set in motion a transformative process that will have immediate and tangible effects. With an estimated capacity to place three to five individuals in units per month, we have the opportunity to provide housing for 17 individuals by the end of August and another 10 by the end of January. This is more than just a financial allocation, it's an investment in human potential and dignity. I am recommending the request of $360,000 budget amendment come from Fund 565 Economic Development Fund, which I have prepared to speak to. The city commission has complete discretion in allocating dollars as they deem fit. And I also would like to just, as a brief reminder of previous contracts for services that the city has entered into, this is not a charitable gish, would be entering into a contract of services, which the city has done with Safe Harbor and Jubilee House. This is, you know, the city acts under the Home Rule Act, which gives the city the authority to address matters related to public peace, health, safety, and welfare. For instance, the contract of services that we entered into with Jubilee Shelter, it's a contract for services, including hours of operation, services provided, and an audit, which is also true for Safe Harbor. The building and land was sold at a discount, which was the prerogative of the commission to do that, under the Home Rule Act. And again, we entered into a contract of services where they tell the city what they're going to provide in terms of hours and of operation, the services provided, and then we determine how that service is rendered to us through an audit. And so, I am recommending that the city move forward this. I wasn't sure, Mayor Shamro, if the city commission wanted me to speak to the Economic Development Fund and why I am recommending that funding source, or I could wait.
Does anybody have any questions on that item or the fund? Nope, I see no questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, thank you first for that presentation of where we're at, where we're going, and just some of the steps that we're taking as we tackle this problem. And now with the, so we didn't do a public comment, just to clarify for anybody who's out there on the presentation, we are now moving on to the agenda item about the budget amendment and the funding for the units, just for those following here and at home. So, I will open up to the commission right now. Do you have any questions about this motion? And does anybody want to make the motion? Go ahead, Heather.
I, yes, I will do that as well.
Fantastic.
But I've shared research previously on the few successes that exist in, related to homelessness. Houston was a big one. Medicine Hat in Canada is also, it's a much smaller city, and it's an even bigger success story. Using data-driven, a housing-first approach, they provided housing without any preconditions and then offered support to address other issues those people faced. The approach was part of a five-year plan, and it was, the city adopted it in 2008 because they wanted to get out of the business of simply managing homelessness. So, they put housing ahead of mental health treatment, ahead of addiction, because they said it was just very, they realized, and they didn't just say it, they realized that it was very difficult to do anything for a person experiencing those issues unless they had permanent, stable housing. By 2015, Medicine Hat declared itself at a functional zero of homelessness. They had, there were no, there were no national definitions at that point. And shelter use had also dropped by 64%. HUD says that housing-first policies save approximately $6,300 annually per homeless adult. The National Institute of Health, cast doubt on whether a program like this can actually pay for itself, but I quote, "Combined with the benefits for participants, it means that they represent a more efficient allocation of resources than traditional services." I am very supportive of this funding, and I'm also supportive of creating our own city-county five-year housing-first plan. And if I could find the recommendation?
You're hidden for all the cycles today, I appreciate that.
No, somebody else can do it, because I'm kind of lost here.
Okay, you're lost.
I'll make the recommendation that a fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget amendment to increase budgeted expenses from, from Fund 565 Economic Development Fund in the amount of $360,000 for gap funding for permanent supportive housing for 17 individuals by the end of August 2024, and an additional 10 individuals for a total of 27 by the end of January 2025, provided at East Bay Flats by Goodwill Industries of Northern, Northern Michigan be approved. And further, that the mayor and city clerk execute any necessary documents with Goodwill Industries of Northern Michigan in connection with the funding allocation provided by the city of Traverse City for permanent supportive housing units as outlined in the city manager's May 2nd, 2024 communication, with such documents subject to approval as to their substance by the city manager and their form by the city attorney.
Second, thank you for that, Commissioner Stanley and Shaw. Any questions or comments on this, anyway?
I just would like to comment that I'm, thank you to the city manager for all the work you've done since even prior to taking office here. And I know there's been a lot of time and energy to reach this level of movement on this very, very challenging issue in our community. I want to thank our police, our fire, for all of the services they have provided in and trying to ensure the safety of people who are living in conditions that are never safe for anyone to live in. I want to remind everyone in our community that homelessness decreases a person's life expectancy by nearly 20 years. It has greater impact than a cancer diagnosis. It is more lethal. When, when Traverse Health Clinic's mobile medical unit goes out to the Pines with Munson Family Practice and TC Street Medicine, they are seeing conditions that you would typically see in developing countries right here, along Division in our community. So, I'm really proud of the work that our city is doing. There's a lot more work to do. I think we're taking important steps here, and I'm very grateful to everyone who has come up with these creative and urgent solutions. So, thank you.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes, I would also like to thank the city manager for all the efforts that have gone into this, not just the item that we were voting on, but some of the smaller negotiations that went into it to make sure that items like trash, like basic sand- that went into it to make sure that items like trash, like basic sanitation, like access to being able to charge a phone are available to the people that don't have a place that they can call home, a toilet they can regularly flush, an outlet in their own bedroom. I have so far, as a non-homeless person, camped every month this year. As of yesterday marks six months, I mean, six weekends in a row that I went camping. Yes, it was a little cold some of those times, but I did have fun of a sort. But especially in campgrounds in the off-season, you can't necessarily have a flush toilet or a place that you can charge your phone, which I need to have it. So there were times when, okay, I know there's McDonald's down the road that has outlets, that has warm food, that has a bathroom, that has Wi-Fi. Sometimes that is, as it was over this weekend, just a 10-minute walk. Other times, it was two miles, which I can still walk, but there are other times when it was a bit longer. And having that as a resource is essential to having people that have limited means and limited opportunities to be able to get some sense of their life back to order that can then make them more available to access the resources that they need to get medical care, to get a job, to get housing, to get the other things that are important to having a stable life again.
Thank you, Commissioner Treadwell. Commissioner Anderson?
I'd like to congratulate our city manager for the collaborative approach that you took to finding these solutions to a very thorny problem. I'm optimistic that our partners at the county will likewise make forward progress, and I am thrilled with both the triage and the midterm and long-term approach. Thank you.
I'll join in the chorus of thank yous, not just, and everybody here has spoken so well to it, but just throughout the process since you've started here, I know, I appreciate the thoughtful way that you approached it as you approached the problem. There were conversations already started by others, there were other discussions out there, you explored those, you used those conversations to find other people to talk to. The conversations, I know, are not done. You know, I think in the past when we've mentioned certain groups or certain issues that we're working on or solutions to certain problems, we don't pretend to have a solution to everything right now, people have said, well, what about X group or Y action? And I know that that, rest assured to the public, that those conversations are still happening. This is not the end, as was laid out, there's a lot more discussion to happen. This particular motion in front of us, though, you know, we're already talking about adding another officer and social worker, and this, you know, when we want to talk, get down to brass tacks, because we're in a budget discussion today, too, this is an amazingly low amount of money for us to spend to take a chunk out of a very big problem. This isn't years and years of, you know, a second officer, not that that's out of the question if that's needed. We really trust and appreciate the way that our community policing program has been working. But the, you know, to think of us being able to house this many people for that money, to have that be people who are not in the pines, who are not at Safe Harbor, who are not trying to find housing and, or trying to find shelter for a night and food and every other basic resource, like was mentioned, it's a huge, it's a huge accomplishment for this whole city. And so I thank you for helping us find that. And to Commissioner Shaw's points, you know, I know that housing-first is the model that Goodwill, NMSH, and so many of our partners use, that we can support them in this and continue to, continue down that road is so important. I joined the other courses, not just, I know we talked about doing something with the county as a, as a long-term solution, and I definitely want us to see those conversations, but also where we have to really be honest with, in Michigan, it's not just about a county, it's about a township level, too. Townships zone, townships approve plans. We need our townships to buy in on this as well, to have our housing scattered thoughtfully, right? We aren't, we're not trying to throw things to the far reaches of the corners and out of sight, out of mind. We want things thoughtfully done and with our, our partners and the, and the townships nearby as well. So I think this is a really great first effort that we have here, and a huge step forward, and as was laid out, and as we'll see in the budget that we're about to get, I think we're down a good path right now, and I hope we can all work together to continue that. Any other comments from anybody? We'll move to public comment now, please feel free. If anybody wants to address something that was in the previous presentation, please feel free as well, since we didn't have a public comment on that one individually.
Good evening, my name is Kristi Minarvini, and my new address is 930 Red Drive. $360,000, for $360,000, the average price of a condominium in Traverse City, we are going to house up to 24 people who are currently experiencing homelessness. We are going to take 24 people who are on the streets or in the woods out and into home. I am the vice chair of Goodwill Northern Michigan, full disclosure, but my interest in this far predates that. Many of you recall that I was at this podium lobbying for seasonal emergency shelter, Safe Harbor, and the purchase agreement with the city. I have never been prouder. I am incredibly impressed by all of you, your level of compassion, your curiosity, your desire to make impactful change, and the ask for $360,000 in combination with the $50,000 funding from the community foundation Rotary and Olson Foundation. Wow, I just, I'm blown away. I'm blown away. I would like to thank city manager Vogel. In four short months, she's come to us with a workable plan, and I'm incredibly optimistic that this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm John Stimson with Homestretch. I'm not a resident here in Traverse City, but I do work out of this building, and I work for finding people's homes and developing homes for people to live in. Even though we don't really participate in the homeless arena, we bump across a lot of inquiries into our website, we do talk to people that are in a homeless situation. One thing to note is that we do have a 24-unit supportive housing development that Goodwill has an MOU with us to provide support. We also have a four-unit quad up at Lefrainer. It's a, it's a small development that was originally created for sale, but we could not sell it. But Mishda said, why don't you entertain the idea of putting a supportive housing installation? And so we did. And that's our foray into homelessness with those four units, because to be eligible, you have to be either homeless or on the verge of homelessness. And I can tell you that it's been successful, but in this building, there's actually an employee down on the first floor that works for the city that was one of those tenants, and she's now moved on and done real well. So there is success in providing housing, as you pointed out. I love your study, Commissioner Shaw, should look into that more, and I look forward to participating in the future. But, you know, I have how many printouts from my property manager? I asked her, I said, I should speak tonight. I could go through and read a lot of them, I only have three minutes, but this one popped out to me. And this actually came in April 11th, so this is really timely. And, "I'm a mom to three, and we are homeless. My kids are 11, eight, and one. My husband is currently struggling to find work, so he's taking care of the children while I work. We are paying $375 a week for a motel, and that takes my whole paycheck every week. I really need help finding a home." That's, that's touching. So we don't know where to send them, other than to Goodwill. And I think as a community, we should be thankful that we have Goodwill, and we should support them. And I ask that you do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have people coming, they're being polite to each other, we appreciate that.
Michael Lowry, I'm a current resident. I personally have been experiencing homelessness off and on for the past 10 years. And then I joined a mental health organization with CMH, a program through them, and we've had members from five to seven every year experience homelessness with severe mental health issues. And the one thing that I have seen over and over with me and with them is housing isn't everything, but it, like you guys have mentioned, it is a very stable background to build a new healthcare forum, and, and then, you know, they get many more opportunities after that. But the, the whole, the whole point I'm making here is that I have several friends that I also have been homeless with who are going through extreme trauma and also being homeless in the pines. And it, it makes me feel better to know that my friends are safe out there, being watched, being guarded, and I just, I really appreciate your efforts in trying to get more opportunities in this community. I, I also am hoping to help advocate and for mental health, for homelessness, and also the LGBT community experiences it very much, too. So appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Siggins, and I work here in Traverse City with We the People Michigan Action Fund, and we have a team here called the TC Housing Justice Team. And recently, we organized an effort to move people from Safe Harbor on the day they closed to the pines. And we successfully moved 44 people from Safe Harbor to Central Church to get their things, and then to the pines. And it was like a life-changing experience. I was homeless myself, living in my car up here in Traverse City and in Cadillac, and I worked here in Traverse City at the time. And I didn't have car insurance on my car, and I spent three days in jail because I was homeless and living in my car that I couldn't afford. And so that was my first experience here in Traverse City with the homeless community. And I'm going to bullet point because I don't want to run out of time. Thank you so much for finding housing for people who are chronically houseless, because that's something that we desperately need. And one of the women that we were moving to the pines asked if we could find more resources for women, because while we appreciate that toilets and water sanitation things are going out there into the pines, she wanted me to remind people that, like, women in the pines are having periods. And for women, that's a unique situation where they need, like, more places to wash themselves and wash their hands, because they're experiencing these things out in the pines with, like, periods and bathroom issues, and then they have to go eat their food, and they didn't be able to, like, properly wash their hands. And so that's a human issue that I think we need to address. So I appreciate that it's being done, but I think it's a little late, and we need more of it in the future. And my third ask would be to please keep Safe Harbor open. I know it's a temporary situation, and it's not a long-term housing solution, but people are really struggling. Some of the people that we moved out to the pines had broken, one gentleman had a broken leg, another woman was pregnant, and another man was elderly and using a walker. And these are just people that shouldn't be living in the woods. It's a human rights violation, and I think that the city can do a lot to address that. I also think the county needs to step up and do more, but I just wanted to thank you all for your efforts, because I do see that you guys are making headway in that, and your efforts are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Audrey Willett. I'm part of the homeless community. I've been homeless for, give or take, eight years, on and off. The last stint was four years. I lost my job during COVID, and I was given a tent and told to go find a home in the woods, and I didn't really want to be in the pines. So I went out into the women's trail and found a little campsite where I guarded, you know, and protected myself and fought off other people and, you know, my little slice of the pie or the woods or whatever, and just trying to survive, you know, every day walking through the woods, just trying to get to work, praying that nobody would notice that I'm homeless, and then the people that did notice that I was homeless wouldn't say anything and would just leave me alone, you know? The shame of being homeless, losing your home, losing your dignity, you know? And so in December, I lost my driver's license due to me being homeless. I decided that I was going to stay homeless because I needed to move up in life, and the only way I was going to move up in life is if I went to school. And the only way that I could afford going to school was to stay homeless, because I couldn't have both. I couldn't have a housing, and I couldn't have school. So when they took my driver's license away because of my address, I was devastated. I worked two years to get my driver's license. I thought, oh my God, I have a van, I don't have to live in the woods anymore. You know, and they took my driver's license away. So that's why I'm here to talk about it. I hear you guys speaking, and you seem to care, and I really appreciate it, but that 27 apartments isn't enough. My fellow homeless friends are suffering in the woods, they're dying. More and more and more people cannot make it with this economy. We have to come together as a community to help, help our, our fellow companions, because we are all human. I was told once that I'm dirt, but I'm not. I breathe just like you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mine's not going to be as emotional. Thank you, seriously. And thank you guys for everything you're doing. It's, it's very needed. My name's Ronnie. I kind of scribbled all over this paper, so it'll take me a second. This issue doesn't just start at Safe Harbor or Goodwill Inn, but the fact that one out of the two places for the homeless in Traverse City cannot be open all year round to keep the vulnerably ill mentally or physically, or there's someone in a rough, rough patch who needs safety. Homelessness affects everyone, not just the homeless, but you incredibly smart and thoughtful people up here can help us change that. Starting at Safe Harbor last Tuesday, we have made, made options and routes and resources to be able to keep these lifesaving places open properly, morally, cleanly, such as ARBA funds, to be able to implement more affordable housing and more resources for physical or mental health, the disease of addiction, and for safe places people can go, feel safe, relax, and be able to enjoy life. We're all human, not by choice. We all breathe the same air, but we are the people, all of us, do have a choice. And starting with me, it's a little bit about me. I'm currently just one of the number of people on the streets of Traverse City succumbing to the inevitable cycle of insanity, exposure to the elements of disease and the weather, and constantly being judged and stepped on by people who have never lived the experience or even know anyone who has suffered through the things that we do as homeless, as homeless human beings. or even know anyone who has suffered through the things that we do as homeless, as homeless human beings. Things like drug and alcohol abuse, traumatic events such as physical, mental, sexual, or verbal abuse, just like everyone else. But we don't have the option to be able to, ever have the option to feel safe or go anywhere that we feel safe. We suffer from mental health disorders, physical disorders that literally cripple us. And as in not even being able to eat or feel or even have anyone that wants to be around us to help. All we have as a homeless community is each other. No support or crotch, as misunderstanding people would put it. No help, no food, no water, no medical.
Please continue.
Thank you. And mental health services, due to not having a physical address, making us US citizens, Michigan citizens, not able to even vote or drive to go vote for important potential solutions that could possibly save the world for the better. I'm a single father with full custody in a mother's state with addiction, mental and physical issues, who can't legally have his two-and-a-half-year-old daughter being 90 days sober in three days because I don't have a home for us to be safe, productive, and happy. My mother just had to leave a full-time nursing position, already not being able to afford anything due to living in Lake County, which is weirdly the poorest county in the state of Michigan. While she looks after my daughter, my dying stepfather with stage IV cancer, and while now I have the control to fix it, please hear me and every other silent voice all over the city and the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on your 90 days. Is there any other comment at this time?
Hello, Dan Buren, 242 East Main Street. I'm also the executive director for Goodwill in the streets of northern Michigan. So thank you for, you know, taking the leadership on this really difficult and complex issue. You know, I appreciate, you're kind of delineating how important housing. I think you heard from the last couple of speakers, the humanitarian impact this has on people's lives. So I appreciate your consideration of this issue. And, you know, this is for, at least for Goodwill, you know, this is not the end for us. We're committed to continuing this journey to a place where everyone has an opportunity to have a safe, secure place to live. And I really do appreciate the city's partnership and the leadership that's come, the city manager on this. And I know these are hard issues. But I appreciate the kind of nuanced approach of a short-term and a longer-term game plan. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment? I want to thank everyone for sharing their comments with us, especially people who shared their personal experiences. And we really appreciate you coming to us and sharing that with us so that us and others can hear. And I think that's very brave, and I really appreciate that. So with that, I will bring it back to the commission. I think we're all ready to vote. Oh, it is a roll call vote? Because it's a budget amendment? Okay, a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Werner.
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro.
Yes. That is probably the best vote I will ever say passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. We'll allow that for a moment. Moving on now to actually another piece of this, but only the very beginning of it. We have the introduction of the budget. Do you want to make any comments, Liz, or do you want us to just have the vote to accept it? I know we'll have some conversations about this in the coming weeks.
Yeah, so I'll keep it short and sweet. The budget is on the website. It was required to be prepared by the first commission in May by city charter, so it is ready for you, and it is available on the website. So, we will need the city to take action to schedule a public hearing for May 20th, as also required by city charter. Our next study session on May 13th, we will do a high-level overview of the budgets provided by Traverse City Light and Power, Downtown Development Authority, and of course, I will go over the city's budget and note some notable changes in there. We request, to the extent possible, that you submit questions as far in advance as possible so they can be answered at the meeting or, if necessary, a subsequent study session. At the May 20 special meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding the budget. Where members of the public can provide any comments for consideration. No action is anticipated at that meeting. On May 28th, we will have a second study session, which is held, if necessary, for additional budget discussions. And then at the June 3rd, 2024 regular meeting, the city commission will then do A through I on my memo. I don't think I need to read that out loud, but that would be when the city would adopt the final budget, including any tax levies. And so, I didn't produce a thorough budget narrative because I wanted it to come from questions and comments and from the experience of having prepared my first budget. Obviously, there were a lot of things to prepare for tonight, so I hope you'll just give me a little grace that it was really rather simple. But I wanted that narrative to reflect the commission's comments, concerns, clarifications on the things that we're working towards in the fiscal year 25 budget. And that's all I have to say.
And just to clarify the process a little, when we do have that vote in June, when you get that packet a week beforehand, it will have each item kind of out with a different motion, as kind of is outlined here, but plus some other things with the supporting materials. And I say that because it isn't going to be a kind of like one giant long motion that we're gonna read. We go piece by piece through bigger parts of the budget and vote on them as we go along. So, just to give, I know we've got some newer members of the commission, so just wanted to give you that little bit of an overview when you see itemized through I. That's not just all one giant piece of material. So with that, unless there's any question about the process, I would take a motion, please, for those that scheduled the public hearing. Go ahead, Jackie.
I recommend that the discussion and approval of the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2024-25, including the six-year capital improvements plan, all proposed tax levies for the city and the Downtown Development Authority, and also a public hearing regarding the Traverse City Light and Power and Downtown Development Authority budgets be scheduled for a public hearing on May 20th, 2024.
I'll second. Thank you. Commissioners Anderson and Shaw, any further comments? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, sorry, I just gotta get back on track here for myself. So with that, we are on to...
Item three.
What's that?
Item three and new business.
Yes, so the purchase of two ambulances for EMS. Sorry, my phone was loading here, so I will hand that over to you, Liz.
Thank you. So, attached is a memo from Fire Chief James Teller, Traverse City Fire Department, regarding the consideration of authorizing $126,752 to Halt Fire of Wixah, Michigan for two ambulance units with the understanding that the balance of those units, which is $349,724, will be due upon the delivery of the first ambulance, which is estimated to be in March of 2025, and again upon the second ambulance in January of 2026, for a total amount of $826,200 to be paid from general, so from Fund 661. I'm sorry, I don't know what the name of that fund is. The Garage Fund, thank you. I've been emphasizing putting the numbers, and then they take the name out and try to trick me. This does require five affirmative votes. The fire department went out to competitive sealed bid at my request, and they got three bids. This is the middle bid. For a number of reasons, Halt Fire was determined by the staff to be the better choice based on the timeline that they could provide the ambulances, their known quality, and with recommendation from our garage staff that they would be better able to be serviced more regularly by our team. And so although it is not the low bid, it is a qualified bid. And therefore, I am recommending these two ambulances be purchased by Halt Fire.
All right, do we have any questions or a motion?
I'll move that the city manager be authorized to issue a purchase order to Halt Fire Incorporated of Wixah, Michigan for the purchase of two ambulance units in the amount of $126,752 with the understanding that the balance of $349,724 will be due upon delivery of the first ambulance in March 2025 and again upon delivery of the second ambulance in January 2026 with funds available in the general fund 661-000-148001.
Support.
Thank you, Shaw and Wilson. And just for future reference to staff, could we make sure that the fund name is in there too? I appreciate if Liz likes to know the number. I think we just need to know where it's coming from.
Okay.
And shorter motions. Is there any further question or comment on this? Anything from the public? All right, all those in favor, Mitch?
Yes, just for the public. While this is not the lowest bid, it does fall within 15%, which is a general rule of taking a slightly higher bid.
Yes, and we always appreciate when staff has the explanation, what if we don't go with the lowest? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And I wanted to save this till after so it didn't seem like I was being biased, but I had the honor of doing the intro. Our local fire department union hosted a lot of, a lot of guys from around the state here for their biannual conference. And lots of praise and thanks for our commission's being supportive and some even some positive comments from other fire departments around the state, appreciating the work that we put into supporting and understanding how they operate. So, didn't want to say that before the vote to taint it, but I just thought I'd share that with all of you. So, moving on now to appointments. We've got Board of Zoning Appeals appointments. Let's see, do you want a motion? We've got, sorry, it's loading. If the chair would like to speak up. For some reason, my phone's just loading very slow all of a sudden.
I move that Ashley Thompson be reappointed to the term expiring June 30th, 2027, seat previously held by Lindsay Erika and Gerald DeGrazia for appointment to the team expiring June 30th, 2026, seat previously held by Douglas Donaldson, and that Steve Standard, Matt Hanley, and Mitchell Treadwell, alternate member be reappointed to the terms expiring June 30th, 2027 on the Board of Zoning Appeals as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Mitchell Treadwell, Commissioner Jackie Anderson, and...
Nope.
No.
Nope.
That should be Commissioner Shaw, right?
No, it was Commissioner, it says Mayor Mike Stanley.
Oh! Right, right. A promotion.
I've been doing this for nothing all night. So Commissioner Stanley as chair.
Right.
Yes, as long as I'm still a commissioner, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So that was a second, then we'll just call that a second? Okay, any comments? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for your work on that. Okay, and then, now we're gonna move on to the appointments to the rec authority. This was Commissioner Anderson, Stanley, and Werner.
I move that Chad Duttmer is be appointed to the term expiring June 30th, 2027, seat previously held by Lindsay Erika on the recreational authority as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Mike Stanley, Commissioner Tim Werner, Commissioner Jackie Anderson. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson and Shaw. Any comment on this? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you all. Moving on to our Historic Districts Commission. Oops, sorry, it just keeps popping up here.
Moving right on.
Thank you. Yes, if you had, please.
I move that Eric Mansu be, I think that's how you pronounce it.
Mancy.
Mancy be reappointed to the term expiring June 30th, 2027, and that Steven Sottiliano be appointed to the term expiring June 30th, 2027, seat previously held by Andy Andres on the Historic Districts Commission as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Heather Shaw, Commissioner Tim Werner, Chair, and Mayor Pro Tem Mark Wilson.
Support.
All right, thank you very much. And Commissioner Shaw, thank you both for being on top of that and great pronunciation. Any comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so this last one here is the, accepting, not the last one, but the resignation of Ross Hammersley in establishing an ad hoc interview. We did previously create one because Paul Heiburger's seat is expiring. Because there's a resignation now, charter dictates that it is a mayoral appointment when it is a resignation. So, because I can't be considered consulting with three other people already, that would be a quorum, we're just kind of swapping it out a little, so I will be on the ad hoc. I believe Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem Wilson got swapped out, is that correct?
Correct.
And he seems okay with that. So, just to give you all a little heads up why we just did this a couple of weeks ago and why we're kind of reforming it now, so.
Note that there is another mayor.
There's four of us on the, there's more people listening.
That was supposed to get taken out. I don't know what's going on here.
I haven't wasted my time tonight, everyone.
Mayor Shaw and Mayor Shamro.
Yeah. Amy, please don't get a complex.
And four commissioners, so this one is actually supposed to be...
Commissioner Werner, Commissioner Anderson, and Mayor Shamro.
Okay, so Mayor Shaw is off the board.
Would you like a motion?
Please.
I move that the resignation of Ross Hammersley effective June 11th, 2024 from the Traverse City Light and Power Board be accepted and further that an ad hoc interview committee be established to make recommendation regarding two appointments to the Traverse City Light and Power Board, terms expiring April 1, 2027, seats held by Ross Hammersley, and term expiring April 1, 2029, seat held by Paul Heiburger, and that Mayor Shamro, Commissioner Werner, and Commissioner Anderson be appointed to such committee. Second.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Tim.
Fully in support. Just a quick comment that Mr. Hammersley is stepping down because his law firm will be representing Traverse City Light and Power.
Yes, and...
So he will literally still be in the room.
Well, if he's from his firm. But yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, I served, I was able to serve with Ross for many years during my time on Light and Power, and want to thank him for his service on the board. And we'll probably reiterate that again when the appointments are made. But very much valued and valued his expertise. So, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, so this is just kind of a formality that we just have the city manager, ori designee on the Grand Traverse County Department Public Works Board. So if I could get a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay.
With support, but quick question. Sorry, our attorney's not here, but is it your understanding, city manager, I'm looking at, that like if you can't make it, can your designee, like, is it either/or depending on the meeting? Like if you can't make it, can we have representation still?
Well, unless I'm in the hospital, I plan to make it to everywhere.
No, I know you do, but...
No, I think that's a good, I think... The wording of "or," city manager or city manager designee, can they do alternates for it, or is it allowed to be a swap-out?
Are we pointing one or the other, or are we pointing?
Like an official vote, voting member. So if I'm not there, there's still a voting member.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Right, and if this motion, if this motion's approved, the city manager serves as the voting member. If the city manager's not there, the city manager can designate someone to serve.
That's what I was wondering.
And it doesn't have to be a specific person, say Art Crager. So, who the person that Liz feels is best qualified and can actually make that meeting that she...
And we're all acting on the assumption she can't make it, which she's sounding like she very much wants to be there. So let's have some...
Hopefully, my first one will be this Thursday.
All right, any other questions from this item?
We've had some interesting things come out of this body, so...
Okay, any other questions on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will now move on. There's no reserved public comment. Is there any final general public comment? Seeing none? Any final comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, thank you all. Have a great night. Meeting adjourned.